Okay, I'd like to call this meeting regular session, August 11, 2025, 7:02. In all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. Dugified, the United States of America. We are a republic of the righteous hands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First, would you please call the roll, please?
Mr. Teck?
Here.
There?
Here.
Mr. Lawson?
Here. Present. I'm out of order a little bit here with the agenda, but Mr. Flowers, happy birthday, and will you do us the honor of giving us a prayer, please?
Thank you very much. Okay, I'm interested in just for the prayer. So there was a ten-year-old girl by the name of Ava Maria. She's daughter of a firefighter up in Akron area. She passed away over the weekend from... Well, basically, she was diagnosed with leukemia about two days prior.
Oh.
Some of her family lives in this area, and, you know, I was just asking if you could just...
Sure.
Ava Maria?
Ava Maria.
If you could just give us your first name.
Sure, yes, yes. Heavenly Father, we come to you this evening with a heavy heart for Ava Maria. Passed away, and we will definitely give our blessings to the family and condolences and a heartfelt sympathy for such a young loss. We also pray that tonight's meeting will be a productive one. We pray that tonight's meeting will be a positive one, and we pray tonight's meeting will be assured. We pray this in the name of Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior, amen. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Flowers, and thank you for that, Mr. Room. The... So we have minutes from a couple of meetings here from July 14. We'll start with those. Have everybody received the minutes from July 14? Are there any additions, corrections?
Where Trevor Martin's name is printed, his first name is spelled T-R-E-V-O-R. Okay. And on page two, looks like under the second reading section, a couple of pieces of legislation, there's some where these got mashed together. It reads, "Ordinance 41-25, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to resolve grievances filed against the city on behalf of the covered members of the Nelsonville Police Department. The sewer rates by four percent."
Oh, yeah. I got that already. Okay.
Okay. Any... Anything else for the minutes from July 14? If not, I'll undertake a motion to accept with corrections. Are you motioning? Are you seconding?
Motioning.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
First call, roll, please.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes. 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 Okay. The minutes from July 27. Has everybody received those minutes, and are there any corrections?
Um...
Adjustments?
There was a spot on there where it says, "In response to a question from Ms. Joseph Sol asked if those names in the counterclaims, et cetera." It seems like the accurate statement would be, "Ms. Joseph Sol asked if those names in the counterclaims would be able to speak with special counsel." That's what. And then later in the paragraph, you referred to me expressing concern that counsel with a capital C and an IL was not consulted about the retainer fee. I was referring to the special counsel.
Legal counsel.
Yeah.
Any other additions, corrections, corrections of the minutes? Okay. Is there a motion to accept the minutes as adjusted?
So moved.
Okay. First call, the roll, please.
Ms. Joseph Sol?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Flower?
Yes.
Mr. Teck?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes. Okay, and lastly, the minutes from July 31. Everybody received those minutes? Are there any additions, corrections, or corrections?
We've already discussed the names spelled incorrectly.
I have. I have, yeah. Yep, I mentioned the phrase names spelled incorrectly, and then anything else for those minutes? Okay, yeah. Is there a motion to accept the minutes as corrected?
So moved.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Flower?
Yes.
Mr. Teck?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Joseph Sol?
Yes.
Thank you, Susan. No problem.
Okay. Auditor and treasurer reports.
Good evening, City Council, residents and staff in attendance, folks watching at home. This is the auditor's report for June, July of this summer. The treasurer's reports, we do not have. There was, of course, a resignation in the treasurer's office for health reasons. And if those reports were done, I did not get them in time. I don't think they were able to be completed. So those are not prepared for this evening, but hopefully, our new treasurer will soon be able to screw those for council at a future date. Lunch training and onboarding is done. And finally, that is the asterisk to this report as well. Any auditor's report should be given after a fully reconciled treasurer's report. We don't have that today, so some of these final totals may shift if we find transpositions or misposting, but it should be pre-cors. And an updated version will be sent as soon as it's done. So I'll start with July 31, 2025. The city's expenses outpaced revenues. Eight hundred seventy-three thousand to three hundred twelve... Excuse me, eight hundred seventy-three thousand, three hundred twelve dollars, seventy-two cents to expenses of nine hundred thirty-eight thousand, forty dollars and twenty-eight cents. At the end of July, you will see... I should have said, there are copies for anybody in the room here at this front seat and at home. They're online at the website, cityofnelsonville.com. All funds combined, six million, six hundred nineteen thousand, six hundred seven dollars, twenty-six cents. And you can see the general fund, the combined street funds, capital, water, and sewer listed below. The cash report was sent to your email and is also on the website. It is not in this copy simply because we're not put it back. Up next is the credit card reports. You can see, since it's been a long time since the last auditor's report, we've got a good number of transactions to cover. We have things like the Red Cross, which was lifeguard training and certification. Kroger, as well as the Kroger gas station, were bottles of water, the big packages of them, supplies for the full concession stand. Similar story at Save-A-Lot. You might see towards the end of the period, Walters Environmental, that was cost for utility training services for our folks to continue their training for the certifications and licenses. Towards the end again, Log Me In. GoPro is a Walter water plant software. Don't ask me what it does. Ask the what, because I don't know. The water plant operator would know. Indeed, towards the top, that's job posting costs and advertising costs. Also towards the top, U S E M C O, sold as a controller, fuse, three of them actually, I believe installed at the wastewater plants. Any questions on the credit card transactions?
It was purchased on eBay.
Probably wondering as well.
Sixteen.
That is a good question. I think the only department that uses eBay is the police department. I don't... I don't see the chief to get supplies or equipment, but I can follow up on that.
Someone in July 14, eBay also.
Gotcha. That'd be a twenty-three as well.
So, thank you.
Those are good questions. I didn't realize it was on there three times. I would have included an explanation. I will double-check on that email. This period is closed for us, meaning we have all the receipts, so I actually don't even need to check with the chief. I will just go over those and send the council around to this meeting. Any other questions?
Is the Amazon Digital five thirty, is that like a subscription to something, or was that... Were those items purchased off of Amazon?
Great question. That is actually one of our account fees. The... Because we have a business account with Amazon, and Zork Prime costs is different than an individual.
Okay.
That was our fees for having a citywide Amazon account. Do you use that? We do. We do, yeah. I believe they give us up to around $10,000 in credit, which essentially means the department heads can put in for approval, but they can have the item shipped before it's paid for. And then we have thirty days to pay for it. I wouldn't say most months. It's between three and six grand at any given month. So there's a pretty frequent churn between the departments. I will move on. I already explained the first bullet point and the final items, treasurer position vacancy. I did want to make sure to say that Mr. Michael Malane, who was a treasurer since December or November of nineteen, was very good at his job. And we are sorry to see him go in the auditor's office. I described him here as an exceptional treasurer. He kept a close eye on the bank and books. He reconciled very quickly. We often used his reconciliation, which is how it should be, but I just mean to say that every time we needed assistance with balancing our side, we could look for Mike's reports, which was always very helpful. And want to express my thanks and gratitude to him, and hope he heals up fast, so. Uh, I don't think... I don't think I can discuss that.
Okay.
But it was... He had a personal issue come up, and maybe if you see him around, but I don't... I think he'd be...
I feel so...
Yeah, okay, yeah. Um, let's see here. On Saturday, we had Nelsonville's First Shred Day. I forgot to include that in the report. It was successful, though a little slower than we had hoped. We had sent out the invites online, posted it in county and local events postings. As well, I sent personal invites to every business in town. We did get some folks to show up, but hopefully, a year from now, you folks can keep it going. And I hear that the county one, it took a while to grow to the point where now they have to turn folks away. It's so popular. So if you folks keep it going, hopefully it can go to a good service for the community. Its cost was just under $2,000. I thought that was pretty good. It costs 250 for the company to come to your house and do it. So 2,000 bucks for up to 20,000 pounds of paper, which we did not get close to. That's... I thought it was a pretty good rate. The drivers actually said we were given a great rate, and anyway, I hope there's a second annual. I hope to see everybody there. Okay, and then... Oh, sorry. Anything else? I got a couple of things, yes. I'm sorry. The audit was released, I want to say, for council and for the public. It is available online at the Auditor of State's website. You can also ask our office for it, if you would like a copy. We went over it with the finance committee in detail. Be happy to answer any questions on it. I hate to get into as much details now. But it was an audit that I think the city knows where it can improve. Also, you can clearly see on there the strengths, and I hope it is useful to the next administration and guiding decisions, so. I've stopped. I'm gonna pause there real quick and ask council's approval for the reports, and then I wanted to read a letter to everybody, if that's all right.
Are there any questions for Mr. Sappington and his final report? Questions? Nothing. We're gonna make... We're just gonna let him off easy.
Easy, easy.
Okay, all right. Is there a motion to accept the auditor's report for June, July? Including the credit card reports? So do we have approval for June and July, including the credit card report?
Boden Dixie.
Second?
Second.
Let's call the roll, please.
Mr. Flowers?
Yes.
Mr. Teck?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Ms. Joseph Sol?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
We will note that the auditor's last, final report has an asterisk on it.
We were not hoping for it, but... All right, if I could, to... I wanted to take... If the council will allow, seeing as this was my last time in this capacity, I'll be in front of you, although it not getting is that easy. I'm sure you'll see me soon. To take a personal... A moment of personal privilege and just read a letter to the citizens and to everyone in this room, which I've been working on. So as Mr. Taylor, I'm sure is happy to hear, I'm gonna start way back at the beginning, twenty-some years ago. All right, "To the citizens of Nelsonville, twenty years ago, my mother was raising my brother and I out on Collison Road, just outside city limits. I still to this day refer to it as the time in the yellow trailer on the hill, even though we had quite the struggle on our hands, little income, and of course, a single parent with two kids, boys at that. One day, my teacher nominated me to take part in the National Youth Leadership Program in Washington, DC. I don't remember the exact cost, but I don't need to, because I know it was in four digits, and anything over a few bucks was certainly too costly for my family at the time. Sitting here now, I do think it's quite possible that my mom thought it was impossible to fundraise as much as I needed to attend, but she wanted me to try anyway. I started writing letters, calling local organizations, businesses, and individuals. I don't remember the list, but there certainly could be some folks here I wrote to at the time. I think I wrote to the city. I know I wrote to local businesses, and I basically asked anyone who might have a few more bucks than we had. I asked them for help. And a funny thing happened. I raised all the money, but I always remember, after I hit my goal, I'll never forget, Mr. Joe Edwards called me from the movie theater. He had missed my voicemail, and he apologized for not getting back to me sooner, because it had gotten stuck somewhere on his desk, or maybe he lost the number, who knows? But I'll never forget the question he asked me, and the question was, "How much do you need?" And before I could answer, he said, "Whatever it is, I'm paying it." He was as surprised as I was, because I didn't think I was gonna get enough, but I told him I had what I needed, and I was gonna attend. But we're coming back to this story, just so you know. Several years later, I went on to graduate here from Nelsonville, York. I ran away as fast as I could and as far as I could, landing again in Washington, DC. And I was a fish out of water, or as we might say, a redneck out of the hills. It wasn't too long before I was back in Athens County, finishing my degree at Ohio University, and getting active in local issues. Went on to run for city council, coming in first out of five candidates, even though I had no name, no experience, and just to hope to make my hometown proud. On council, I chaired the finance committee, pushed for more responsible finances, helped pass the city's balanced budget ordinance, and later even got removed as the finance chairman to for standing up to some of the administration's unplanned, in my opinion, wasteful spending. I learned a treasurer lessons, including that I was not always right. I fought battles, as I know now, even sometimes when they didn't need fought. And I made mistakes a time or two, although I don't regret getting removed from the finance committee in 2018, I believe. However, my concern for the collapsing banks, bank accounts only grew with time. When the time came for another election for auditor, I informed the incumbent of my intention to run and went on to win by just thirty votes. Without any training or transition, I walked into the office on the first day and saw my computer and email had been wiped and deleted. This set off an investigation, though quietly, across the building that concluded with the biggest debt bust in city history. As we all know, the former deputy auditor had been stealing from the city to the tune of almost $400,000. Our reconciliations were not complete. The IRS wanted an additional 410 some... $410,000 from the city. The state wanted 20,000 more. And that's just the beginning, frankly. The bank had just 1.6 million in the accounts, a fraction of the balance that existed when I was being raised in that trailer. Some of you folks might remember. And the general fund was down to 86,000. The same person would have turned around, I think. But my team and I rolled up our sleeves and got to work. We managed the investigation to a successful conclusion, obtaining jail time, with most of the funds restored to the city of Nelsonville. We just put an additional $200 back in the bank on Friday from that debt. We successfully took on the agency's demanding debts, fines, and penalties as they circled around the weakened city. We earned forgiveness on over $440,000 in those debts. Treasurer Malane and I implemented the standard that exists now for routine monthly reconciliations. The city has 6.6 million dollars in the bank as of today. That can be put to good use for the community, especially in large matching grant opportunities. The general fund nears 1 million. And I'm proud to say that the Betty Johnson Trust, at one time sitting in West Virginia, missing, although the word missing might even asterisk, but not here, was successfully recovered to the tune of 670,000 dollars by the auditor's office, and of course, with council assistance. My proudest times are with the staff. The auditor's office turned around a negative reputation slowly but surely. Judy Smith, bringing a career's worth of experience in banking, has brought the city into the 21st century, was effective and accountable, accounts payable. She works, and she works, and she works, until the problem is fixed, a rare quality. We humorously refer to her to this day as the mayor, because her work ethic is unmatched. Terrick has helped implement a standard-setting payroll process, wholly transparent. It's online. It's accountable. We can answer any question to anybody about their paycheck at any time. And payroll has gone from wholesale debt, as we just talked about, to being the pride of our annual audit, usually without zero write-ups. She completes tasks quickly and effectively. In fact, so quickly, I often have to work just to keep up with her. And Robert Taylor, who's probably watching tonight, one of the sixteen, one of the city's few career-long civil servants, knows utility billing like the back of his hand. He knows nearly every account. He takes personal pride in supporting the entire utility department's work with his operation. And he lovingly refers to most of you in this room, in fact, all of you of your utility account holder here, as his customers, my customers, displaying to me ownership and pride, which is also rare these days. We've done the work. We've done the work well, and we've done the work even when our spouses were gone, wanted our behinds to get home and stop working so late, especially through those tough years. To me, there's a discernible line between 20 years ago and today. I was taught a whole slew of things in that trailer, but a couple of things stand out. My brother and I were taught to do right, even when nobody was looking, because not even riches can... And I mean this, not even riches can give you what honesty and dependability give a person in this world. And though it took some time, I realized that it took a whole village or city to raise us, even on a lonely hill in Appalachia and maybe especially then. I had coaches push us to do... Push me to do better. Teachers encouraged me to do more. School staff who kept us safe and upbeat, and so on and so forth. But most importantly, I had a town that didn't know who I was, who my family was, and yet helped raise me and later elected me over and over again. I can't think of any greater affirmation of trust from all you folks lifting me up, especially when I had nothing to give back but my time and my service and my career. I hope these last ten years, six as your auditor, have paid down that debt somewhat to this community, and hopefully then so. Starting out, as I put on my yard signs, my goal was to make the town proud, after everyone supported my family so strongly. Along the way, I learned that I could be a part of that village too, lifting up fellow Nelsonville citizens and being part of the village. And frankly, pushing back against those who sought to tear Nelsonville down, the city down, and even those and pushing back against those who stand to this day at the city's doors with their hands out, some of them with wallets that are already old enough. It has been my privilege of my short... It has been the privilege of my short life, spending most of my adulthood, working for our town as best I know how, while not taking a penny of compensation... Excuse me, a penny except the compensation of the position. I wanted to express that I have gratitude for this opportunity, the trust, and the faith. Everyone put it to me in my team. Thank you.
So if I may?
Yeah.
Appreciate the words, but you're not done yet. So you've wrote about forty days, so.
If you're not done, more days to say it.
Thank you, Taylor. Appreciate it. At this time, I forgot earlier, so this is my mistake. I'd like to amend the motion to amend the agenda to add discussion about filling the vacancy on council. We have two individuals from the community that have put in a letter of interest for the position, and if we can, have that discussion and perhaps even discuss. I think they're both here, so. All right, so I motioned. Is there a second?
Second.
First call, roll, please.
Um, Mr. Teck?
Yes. Sorry, yes. I'm trying to make my mouse over here.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Flowers?
Yes. Okay, so we had two letters of interest, Mr. Doug Childs and Mr. Wesley Henderson, that emailed the clerk for the vacancy from Ms. Sonic. I see Mr. Childs here, and I believe Mr. Henderson is here, okay. If we want, we can ask them to come to the podium and introduce themselves, talk a little bit, if they want. If anybody wants to ask any questions. I'm interested in filling the vacancy tonight, if that's...
I'm filling the vacancy tonight.
Okay, okay, all right. So would one of you gentlemen like to come up and introduce yourself, talk maybe, since some of the public may not know who you are?
Rock, paper, scissors.
Yes, there you are.
No points unless you flip.
So I'm Wesley Henderson. I wanna fill a seat on city council. I just wanna help with the transition with the community. I'm due to this, speaking out loud, so bear with me.
You're doing great. You're doing great, don't worry about it.
I'm a project manager for a vice regular company. So I'm good with teams, dealing with people. I gotta deal with city inspectors of Columbus. So I'm pretty in it. Yeah, that's pretty much it. I love Nelsonville, my kids love the school district, and I just wanna see Nelsonville go on the right path.
Any questions for Mr. Henderson?
Do you lead people on the job?
No, I gotta stay there till the job is finished. So.
I think you misunderstood me, I said, do you lead people on the job?
Yeah, so our company subs work out to corners, and I gotta stay there, communicate with them, make sure the job is done and ready for inspections with the city of Columbus. So I'm pretty, I'm there from sunup to sundown. Just working as a team to get it all together, ready for the inspection. So like the nursing home can open up.
Appreciate it. You don't tell me these things.
Do you live in Nelsonville?
Yes, sir. I live on 28 Dawin Drive.
28 what?
Dawin Drive.
Dawin Drive?
Yeah. Took my day.
Of course, I grew up to the far down on the east end.
Are you, you're currently on the ballot for January, correct?
I believe so.
Okay, that's what I thought, I thought you were.
Yeah.
For City Council?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any other question? Any more questions? Okay, thanks for coming down.
Appreciate it.
Anyway, well, good evening. My name is Doug Childs, I live in 200 West Washington Street, I've been here for about five years. Most everybody in the room knows me from my previous service to the council. So I won't bore you with my resume, most of you know who I am and what I believe in, and I'd just like to say the reason I'm here tonight is because I had a few people approach me that were concerned about the upcoming transition and they wanted some, somebody who'd been here before to kind of keep the ship afloat and go in the right direction. I'm all about doing what's right for the city. I care less about the drama and anything else that would distract us from actually getting the business of government done for the city. So I am open to any questions, that's what we all have to say at this point.
Are you running for anything other than this?
I have not decided to run for anything. I'm not even sure if I'm able to, if the new form of government comes about, as a federal employee, I follow the Hatch Act. So that's still something I have to work out before I make a decision.
Would this involve, would this interrupt the Hatch Act for you?
Not until issue 23 becomes the new form of government.
So the Hatch Act prohibits federal employees from holding partisan state, partisan or local state issues under this statutory form of government, council seats are explicitly partisan. Under Nelsonville Charter, they're nonpartisan, so he's eligible to serve now, but not eligible to serve that.
Correct, right.
Yeah, I read, I read that Hatch Act.
Is there a chance of you being deployed, working with the government?
No, I worked in the contracting office of the VA out of the living room of my house, so if I get deployed, it's just.
Wanted to make sure that there wasn't no, no, no opportunities around here.
No, there won't be any disaster assistance that I get called for, so just point them on.
Any other question?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doug.
Okay, so we have two candidates to fill the vacancy of Ms. Sonic. Do we have any interest in making a motion for one of the candidates?
Make a motion to accept, Mr. Henderson.
Okay. Do we have a second? Okay. First call, roll please.
Mr. Taylor?
No.
Mr. Sol? Yes. Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Flowers?
No. Yes.
Okay, so in this instance, Mr. Row, we, it was three to two, that's the majority, it doesn't have to be.
It's who's present, present. It's a majority of those present here. Okay, so we don't count vacancies, we don't count absences, we, um, the two, but we do count abstentions. So it's whoever indicated present on the roll, per call, majority of that number is required. So three, three being a majority, two, or sorry, three being a majority of five, sorry, yeah. Three, three is a majority of five.
Okay, perfect, I just wanted clarification, so, so, Mr. Henderson, congratulations.
Thank you.
Would you like, do we want to square him in this evening?
It's whatever the question.
Okay, I would, if we want, we can start breaking them in now. Are you able to participate tonight if we swear you in?
Yeah.
Okay. Could we swear him in, please?
Let me just pull, pull it up.
And thank you both for putting in your names for council.
Can you raise your right hand and repeat after me? I state your name.
I'm Leslie Henderson.
Do hereby solemnly swear or affirm.
Do, say it again.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will.
That I will.
Support the Constitution.
Support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the state of Ohio.
Of the state of Ohio.
And the charter and laws.
And the charter and laws.
Of the city of Nelsonville.
Of the city of Nelsonville.
Faithfully, honestly, and impartially.
Faithfully, honestly, and impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharges duties.
Of my office.
Of my office.
As member of council.
As member of council.
Of the city of Nelsonville, Ohio.
Of the city of Nelsonville, Ohio.
Congratulations.
Appreciate you.
Thank you. Alright, don't run them off, I'm using my right.
Okay, next on the agenda, are there any citizens' comments?
I'm Alex Ross, 760 Poplar Street, Nelsonville. I'm always dismayed when I see plastic bottles, and particularly when taxpayer money has bought plastic bottles or styrofoam plates or cups. I'm a member of the Senior Citizens Club, and although there are many dishes and there is an installed dishwasher, they are buying plastic, I had speakers from Athens Rethinks Plastic, but it's hard to get through to people. I think everyone knows there's a big plastic crisis all over the world. There are boats that are dragging huge sayings to try and get it out of the oceans. It's choking and killing wildlife. It is the default way for oil companies to keep on doing what they do because it is made from oil. So I'm very dismayed that I even saw President Biden give a press conference with plastic. It's very hard to avoid, I have taken the no plastics pledge, but you're gonna starve if you try and buy food that is not plasticized. I recycle like a fool, I recycle for people, community vets who don't give a damn, throw everything in the trash, and I appreciate that sort exists, but compliance is very low. And it just dismays me to see the willful ignorance or the ignoring or not wanting to face global warming. I know this may not be the same body that is in power next year, but I would hope that we could get a little sense and have some guidelines in the future that taxpayer money does not go to something like plastic, which will outlast us all by centuries for a momentary drink of water or a piece of cake or whatever. I'm really tired of being a patsy for the plastic producers, trying to, using my spare time to wash out plastic bags and get these big cake containers every month, we have a big cake, celebrate birthdays, and it just breaks my heart that we have not woken up to this crisis that is all around us. So I'm hoping in the future, a penny may drop somewhere, thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Can I ask you, is this in regards to an event that recently happened, or is this in regards to like items that are sold, the cool concession stands?
Yeah, that hurts too.
Okay.
I mean, we have, I go to Puffto every week and I get my water there. And I just don't see why, I'm the only one who seems scared about these things.
But where do you put your water in, in Coke or Coke?
What choice do I have?
Plastic, there's no other, there's no other choice, that's the point, even if you, they say that there's reports that if you make glass and anchor now, there's as much, there's more microplastics in a glass bottle than it takes to make a plastic bottle. Like I'm 95% sure that I read that the other day. So it's like you don't have a choice either way, it's just so ubiquitous. She doesn't like plastic, which she doesn't have a choice but to use it.
There are options that are not single-use, as I was hearing, you know, a plastic glass, you use one thing, throw it away.
That's, that's.
Thirty gallon, there is a limited book dollars, I understand you can't bring tanks a certain size, but I've seen folks load up a thirty gallon reusable container that you can go RVing with and get their fresh water that way, which leaches a lot less.
You're right, I wasn't meaning to say that, I was, I was just thinking about the direct.
I use the spring as well and how you package it without having your, I can even only reuse the milk jug so many times. It has effects on your body, man.
I realize glass is heavier, so it takes more fuel to transport than plastic, but, you know, we are buried in plastic and it's not getting any better.
Thank you, appreciate it. Any other citizen comments?
Keep it brief today. Just wanted to come and talk to council, the larger community, and those who are at home as well, to speak on my pride and how impressed I am with folks at the Nelsonville Community Cookout efforts. The past month or so, we've had community members do a lot of work to make a space that is welcome for everyone, whether or not you have five dollars to throw in for a meal or not, hungry. You show up and you get fed, I respect that and the period we're in. It's just a group of folks like me that are still trying to find their way on their feet, that they have a dream and they're committed to it. Four weeks in a row of putting on a dinner out of your own pocket is something I can't imagine this moment. So we both wanted to come publicly and recognize them for those efforts, but also reach out to the community to say that, you know, if you're available, Sundays at five, right now it's at Polly Field. The more folks that can get involved and if you've got half an hour, meet some neighbors, see some new faces, support the park that eventually is gonna need some financial investment. Got some deferred maintenance going on over there.
We actually have somebody giving us clothes right now.
Mm-hmm, and I know that we're working.
No, I was just telling you, we last committee meeting, we literally got on that, just so you know.
So I would love to see more folks take the time to get over there. But also we're looking for sponsorship, I'm not personally involved in the leadership of the event, but I've attended as many times as I can and food is good. Plus I like hanging out with the little kids and the adults and just forgetting about all stress and everything for a while. Then you sponsors on the weekly food, right now it has been privately and individually sponsored, some donations, I believe. Things like non-plastic plates and cups, and I know drinks were a big concern. When you're paying off the shop the trucker, it adds up very quick. I believe next week I've got some meat from the canal carry out, so when it comes to keeping things local, I love to see the growth. I would love to see more seats at the table and finding the money to help in whatever way we can.
Excuse me, I didn't mean to ref you. Have you, have you, I'm on the board of the Nelsonville Food Cover, have you ever contacted the Nelsonville Food Cover and see if they had any, anything available for those events?
I personally haven't contacted them for them, we utilized the cover ourselves, and I believe the baked beans I brought yesterday for the five cans did come through food covers. And do you know the kids that are running at, they're not kids, well, they're all, they've reached out, probably should follow up.
I can check with them.
I can have them reach out, Mr. Flowers, if you'd like me to, I'm in direct contact with them multiple times.
Sure, okay, well, I was gonna say, if we have a board meeting.
I can, I can have them reach out to you through the food cover.
Well, I'm just on the board, I can, I mean, there's four of us.
They're some, they're, I'm sending them for you either way, no more.
More cans, I'm better and.
Yeah, no, I'd be glad, I'd be glad to take that run and do that, see if we could come up with some people for that. I think that's, that's a nice, I should. I didn't catch your name either.
Dakota, Corosol.
Okay.
I believe there will be one on the last day of parade of the hills, so I'm kinda getting out here and trying to make sure we can do it.
Do you know a stopping date?
As far as I know, it's now.
I think we're running until the snow comes, I'll be honest.
We're looking for an inside venue.
They spoke to, they spoke to me about it, and I spoke about it from here, and they, they're looking for a continuing venue, but we're also looking at getting some stuff put in there at Polly Field to make it more convenient for us to cook for a larger group of people. But they're, they're gonna, they're looking for a one-to-one match, they're trying to raise some funds and see if they put in to improve the eating area at Polly, if the city might. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, no, it's my fault, I was talking too fast. I'm really excited about this thing because I really do think it could be cool. But they're talking about trying to throw in and maybe do some improvements down there where they can cook during the summer and do it in the winter somewhere else. Yeah. Thank you.
Are there any other questions on the item of mutual aid? I know there was also a question on the saw that was stolen from the fire department a while back, and some interest to also try to either replace it or raise funds for that, I wasn't sure if that was still an issue for you.
The saw is still missing, I think we should reach out to our insurance company first to see if that can be replaced before anybody take it upon themselves to try to generate money for that.
It was not interesting.
I saw that, I'll get ahold of Taylor in the morning to see if that's something that we can turn into our insurance company.
Anyway, just wanted to.
Thank you.
Put on some feelers for me, truly.
So just for clarity, so Sundays, 5:00 PM, Polly Field.
As far as I understand, roughly 5:00 to 8:00, but we have to be out before sundown. Did I understand?
Perfect.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Might even see me pull up with the grill on top of the bed.
Mm-hmm, with evidence.
You might, you might get to receive some stuff.
Okay.
Sometimes I forget.
Are you the grill master?
No, no, I'm the grill delivery master.
The woman behind us, the grill master.
I'm your FedEx guy.
Okay. Any other citizens' comments? No, okay. Next, we have.
No? Okay. Um, next we have uh, business and organizational comments. Uh, Mr. Casey Cox.
Hi, my name is Casey Cox. I live at two ten West Columbus Street. Um, yeah, so I'm here to talk today about the potential removal of the mansion building um, and the discussions surrounding it during last week's finance committee meeting. Um, I just hope to probably share the vision of this idea uh, with you all. Clear up any misconceptions that might be out there and hopefully persuade council that this is a project we're pursuing for our town. Uh, so start electrifying context for this whole issue. Uh, before I get too deep, I wanna make it known that I am well aware of the emotions, the memories that are involved when, as a town, we're consider, considering the possibility of tearing down a historic building like the mansion building. Um, like many people, we all in here probably agree, the history of our small town is what makes it so appealing, not only to us, but to our viewers as well. Uh, a lot of my memories growing up, if you knew my grandpa, Bill Cox, uh, the majority of my memories was him when I was just driving around Nelsonville and him talking about the history of Nelsonville, I was around here. Um, he, the uh, I forgot the full name of it, but the Johnny Appleseed uh, park out there, the old canal locks and everything. All my great memories are with him, just talking about like the canal, what it used to be like, just the history of it. And when my kids were born, I took them out there, cause it's just a really nice park to just sit and it's quiet and, you know, to just kind of reimagine the history of the place. So the, the history of Nelson, my, my point in telling that is that the history of Nelsonville is very near and dear to my heart. Um, so when I talk about this, it's not just something that's just, I'm very flippant about, it's something that I've thought about for a while. But I also, I live close to Nelson Commons, if you know where West Columbus Street is. Uh, I often take my kids to the park here to play. And over the years, I've spent, I've got kids, they're five and three. Uh, I've spent a lot of time here and I feel pretty passionate that a renovation of Nelson Commons is needed and can benefit our community greatly. So last year I joined the Parks and Rec Committee. I've, I've got a lot of ideas for how we can improve Nelson Commons. I'll share these ideas with a lot of you here tonight. Uh, some of these include getting a whole new playground, which I'm uh, contacting company about as a member of the Parks and Rec Committee. Um, new and safer fencing around the park. And also, like I mentioned, the demolition of the mansion building to make space for an extension of Nelson Commons. Uh, now this uh, you know, mansion building plan has been kind of a hope of mine for some time now. Uh, whenever I take my kids to the park or when I drive through Canal Street, right? I think how much traffic we get at part of the town. You think about it, it is like, besides the square, almost like the hub of Nelsonville, in my opinion. Right? People coming to town that way, you have Rocky there and you have Star Brick, the Elks, the railway, the pool, Black Diamond, the Commons itself, right? There's a lot of traffic that happens there. And oftentimes I wonder, you know, what visitors to our town think when they see this massive building that's beyond repair and missing the majority of its siding, right? And the backside of it is what the majority of us see. On top of that, there's a gap between the mansion building and the building next to it, that if you walk through that, I, I have a couple. I, you can't really call it an alleyway, I just call it a gap between the buildings. But it's littered with glass, um, the siding's missing all throughout that and people have been uh, sticking things in that siding, hiding stuff in there that probably shouldn't be in there. And with how often I'm there with my kids at the park, I see a lot of people walking in between that gap and doing things that they probably shouldn't be doing with little kids in the park nearby. So, um, that's just one tiny thing with that there. Um, so one day I approached my dad, Steve Cox, who's on the Bear Brothers Foundation, which is located right next to the mansion building. I told him about this vision I have for the space that's currently occupied by the building. Now he thought it was a good idea we're pursuing and he reached out to Hocking College because they currently own the building. And uh, in hopes that the Bear Brothers Foundation could buy the building from Hocking College. I want to emphasize that this idea was not initiated by Hocking College at all whatsoever. It was, um, I brought the idea to my dad on the Bear Brothers Foundation. He approached Hocking College himself. Um, now I think on this topic, uh, we can all agree that this building is currently beyond repair. Uh, there are some members of city government who have been inside this building and can definitely attest to this. When I see the building, I see the potential for open space, definitely not a parking lot. Uh, but an open space to beautify our town for visitors and citizens to enjoy themselves more in Nelson Commons. I floated around the idea of putting a basketball court there in the space as a member of Parks and Rec Committee. Uh, you know, I think it's been added element to the Commons and it's currently lacking and basketball courts, in my opinion, get a lot of use when they're by the pool. It also gets good use by the kids who attend the Hive, that'll provide the employees more space to hold activities for kids. Um, which basketball courts would be more than that. They can, utility courts that hold more opportunities for activity besides basketball. Um, but that's just one option. There are many options. Right? I also think this space could be a great opportunity to serve as more green space in our town for people to enjoy themselves peacefully and quietly besides, besides playgrounds and the Commons. I'm envisioning a space, you know, perhaps filled with trees, beautiful landscaping, benches, and perhaps even an archway that serves as an entry point into the Commons. Whatever we decide to do with the space, I feel confident that we can attract more people to our beautiful town by extending Nelson Commons into the space and beautifying it. I can attest, you know, as a parent of young kids, when I travel and I need a break on a long road trip, I look for a good park to stop at and, you know, let my kids run off some steam. I've found some pretty cool towns, um, you know, in Appalachia, as I, as I go down, that remind me of Nelsonville, that I think have a lot of charm, right? That I wouldn't have known had I not stopped and looked for a cool park with my kids. Um, I think that we can uh, make Nelson Commons bigger, obviously, and more unique. To provide more recreational opportunities for our kids and hopefully again, attract more people into our town that can by word of mouth, spread the news about, hey, Nelson's got this cool thing going, this really attractive like bigger park, you're like, you should check it out with your kids. But on top of that, I want to emphasize, everyone involved in this, like I, like I mentioned with my dad and there's some other people that we've talked to as well, Taylor brought up the finance committee meeting. We all agree that it's important that we preserve the history of our town. We don't want to just go tearing down buildings without a second thought to it. We want to incorporate, if you guys know the mansion building, the, the beautiful white tiles as you enter it, um, that have Metamont. We want to keep those incorporated to the space. And also, it's a great idea to include historical markers that provide stories about the mansion building and the family as well. Um, somebody also said at the finance committee meeting, I can't remember who, but they talked about um, you know, providing historical, uh, whether markers or stories about Daniel Nelson, the founder of Nelsonville. I think that'd be a great place to do that, right? If we extend Nelson Commons into the space, it'd make a ton of sense to have historical information about the founder of Nelsonville in Nelson Commons. In addition to, like I said, the historical markers, uh, that honor the Metamont family in that space. So um, there's a lot of ways that we can honor the history of the space is what I'm trying to get at. Um, just to clarify the, the logistics of this plan, so um, Hocking College has verbally agreed to sell the building to the Bear Brothers Foundation. Ultimately, it's up to council, um, to agree to it. Baird would then purchase the building and transfer ownership over to the city. Then the city would be responsible for the cost of demolition. So I'm trying to make sure that step-by-step process is clear. I will leave you with the final thought as I talk about this and then if there's any questions, you can run it by me. Um, at first glance and first thought, tearing down a historic building like the mansion building might feel like we are giving up on our town or on that, on that building. But I encourage you to view this through a different lens. By tearing down the mansion building, we are affording ourselves the opportunity to provide more ways for the citizens of our town and visitors to enjoy themselves and connect with their neighbors. And it is one hundred percent possible that we can do this in a way that honors the history of our town and of this building. Thank you. So, are there any questions, I guess, from anybody before I sit down?
I don't have any questions, but I have a comment. I appreciate um, your statement. I think it's good. I've worked with you on, well, I've worked with you over the years on many things, coaching. You know, Parks and Rec. You have great vision for Nelson Commons, in my opinion. I have no problem with the extending of the park. The issues I personally have with the tearing down of the building and is the step-by-step process and how it's happening. So in the last decade, the college has spent millions of dollars on acquiring property, renovating property, and they've done nothing with that building. They did, you know, um, have it clean the pigeon, you know, um, you know, whatever waste, uh, you know, at one point. Um, but they haven't done anything to shore the building or, you know, to even tear it down themselves. So to me, for Baird, which is generous, to purchase it from the college, but if it's that and far disrepair, it's gonna cost money. I don't feel like it's appropriate to even purchase. They should be donating the, the building. And I personally, from my spot here on council with the city, I don't think it should be the taxpayers' responsibility to tear it down because they neglected it, right? It's, it's not, I feel like there should be some accountability here on the college to take part of, you know, to take responsibility of that building. Um, that's where I'm at. That's the, the crux that I have with it. I used to, when I was in college at Hocking, we used to, I used to run a store in that building. That, you know, the business and accounting had to run the store, do the books. Natural Resources made all the birdhouses, bat houses, they sold clothes, you know, out of that, that, you know, mostly that were provided from the college and the students. And they just have not kept up with that building over the years. I understand that how, you know, buildings and properties can, you know, if they're not kept up, how they can go down. So I just think that for me, it's accountability for them to be able to, to take it down themselves. I don't feel like it's necessarily appropriate for the taxpayers to be responsible for that. And, you know, if it is in fact such a hazard that it's evidently been brought to, you know, to my attention that it is, why are, why is it still, why is it still there? Why has it not been dealt with sooner than I guess? So those, those are my sentiments, but I appreciate everything that you've done. I know you've put a lot of work into all of this. Um, so I'm not, I didn't mean to rain on your parade during the finance meeting, you know, I mean, that's, um, that was not my intent, so.
Do you, would you be able to, do you know, would you be able to share with us any information about like any um, sales price point that might have been discussed to this point? Um, or would you be able to speak to the potential cost of the demolition?
I personally have not.
Just uh, just for, cause I, I chaired the finance committee for Ms. Sol when she wasn't here at the last meeting, but um, Mr. Holmes, I believe, had a quote of her, was it seventy-eight thousand? Was there a quote for like seventy-nine thousand per teardown?
Seventy-nine.
Seventy-nine thousand.
I have a question.
Did you have something else?
Yeah, that was, no, I don't.
Okay, okay.
Have we, has there been a structural engineer inspecting building? I mean, I know when you stand and look at it, it's horrible. But you know, do we have something that tells us how dangerous this building is? I heard that this morning on the viewpoint program over and over, but I'm just I'm concerned. I'm one of three women who were able to save our high school buildings off Bay X Street. And a lot of people made fun of us when we took those and led you to believe that, you know, nobody would want anything to do with them. Well, today we do have section A or section five housing located there, but it's provided a safe place for many people that didn't have that before when they were renting. And I'm definitely all from Nelsonville, Ohio, the same as you are, Casey, but I'm just concerned and I respect what Mr. Taylor just said very much.
I don't know if this is appropriate to put it in this area, but it seems to me that we have a land bank. And it seems that if we would condemn the building and let, and let the land bank take it down.
That might be a possibility. They've done it. They have access to some funds.
Right, and, and yeah, they have a lot of funds. And then, then, then if we have that vacancy there, then perhaps uh, we can find, uh, and this is a very long shot, but find somebody to buy that property and build something nice where that was. Nothing against your plan, nothing at all. But it's gonna take, uh, I was told when I started checking into this, that there's possibly asbestos in the building. Now Betty Joan spoke with me about it when I asked her in church, uh, yesterday and they're gonna have to canvass it, they're gonna have to hazmat probably to get in there, and I don't know that for a fact, but it just seems that, that they would. And, and the seventy-nine thousand dollars that they got back in I don't, I went in the nineties or eighties, take it down, or nineties or whatever it was, is probably gonna double or triple with the hazmats having to come in to take it down. So the cost of taking that building down is going to be tremendous. And um, and that's my biggest, I'm, I'm with Mr. Taylor. And my biggest thing is uh, the limited funds that we've got to deal with on this, which is a great idea, but if we can do it in some kind of a different order than, than having the city be out the money to, to actually take the building down. Yeah. That's the biggest problem.
Let me, um, I, here's what I, here's what I'm willing to do. I'm willing to um, work with Mr. Holmes on uh, possibly contacting someone that can inspect it to see if there is asbestos, talking to the land bank. And possibly, you know, exploring other options. Yes, sir, Mr. Holmes.
If I may.
Get out of the way.
I've looked at that building twenty years ago and it's not salvageable, okay? The old high school was made out of concrete, you'd have to bring a wrecking ball and tear it down.
The back of it fell off of there though.
But the front of it wasn't gonna fall off.
No, but back did collapse.
The, the only reason that, and I'm I'm on the same committee with Casey and Cory and, and everyone. We just want to begin discussion. We're a long way from coming to council and saying we need seventy-eight thousand dollars, okay? We need to begin discussion. This was, at, at the utility committee, what I, what I presented is that this would be an ideal project for the comprehensive plan to get involved in, because there are people who feel very, very strongly about this. You feel very strongly about the role of Hocking College. So we've got several different players and uh, what I want to tell you is that it's an issue that chemicals are gonna have to deal with. Exactly how we're gonna deal with it, I don't have a clue. But, but I was trying not to say, okay, let's pick a side. It seems like we're, end up picking a side. Let's uh, can we recognize that it's a community problem that needs to be addressed? And we all agree to kind of work together collaborat, collaboratively?
I agree. I think, and I think that's where you and I possibly could have a conversation with Mr. Wasserman. Yeah. You know, and see if there is some option. If the land bank would be able to assist in that matter, because I just know that they have availability of funds for such reasons, so. And, and if in the event that it is, there is asbestos, then I think they've also done some of those tear downs as well, where they've had abatements for that, so. Yeah. Um, and, and just, you know, it's just a, uh, I think it's a, a better option, if you will. Because I, I just, I'm not gonna be supportive of the city paying for the removal of the building. That's, that's.
I'm on the citizen's side, not, not any other side.
Well.
But.
Okay, again, let's go back and be collaborative, okay?
I think I just, I think I offer to be collaborative.
Collaborative means we give and take, okay? So, um, I'm not trying to be hard-nosed here, but I'm just saying that it's wonderful if somebody could come in with a hundred thousand dollars, but we also have to have the safety of the people. If we don't take it down, or if it doesn't come down, sometime it will come down by itself and then we've got a real problem. So we don't want anybody to get hurt.
Yeah, I, I'm not disagreeing with anything you just said. However, I'm just saying that if the land bank, it, it has funds to pay for the removal of it, that's a much better option. So I am looking for other alternatives than spending just the taxpayers' money to do that. So um, that's all I'm saying. There's all, there's always other options. We just have to go find them and, and um, and I will be collaborative, because I think Hocking College should be part of this as well. So, they'd be part of the helping find the funds.
Okay. I may offer an additional possible solution that I've spoken on a few months prior. Under the pathway of a certified local government with a focus on historical preservation, there is funds available support to find grant writers, support to find the right professionals to survey the buildings. If the entire building is not salvageable, is the face of the building salvageable in a way that you can get grant history? Preserve that, it makes things for a green space. All of that has programming that doesn't have to come out of our accounts. It would just take a lot of planning and we haven't reached out to follow those.
If I could speak on that right there, um, that is some of the things that Hocking College actually did. They, they, they went after all kinds of grant money. My, the figure I heard last uh, last week when I was at a meeting was uh, to put up, redo the building and put it up, the college, uh, was five million. And the grant writer at Hocking College told me that a lot of that money was to preserve the facade on the front of the building. So it's not like they've just been sitting on it. They have been really trying to find funds to do something with it. But it's just so far gone, you'd have to take the. But it's just so far gone, you'd have to take the whole back of the building, leave the facade, you know?
No. And just to kind of bring it back to what I said too, I, I do wanna clarify, when the wording, I, I can see why you're spelling that way Cory, the wording of the city would be responsible for getting it. I, from, from that, I meant like finding avenues to tear it down. I didn't mean I want seventy eight thousand taxpayers' dollar to go straight for that, you know? Like, like I said, land grant, like those grants and everything, those are things that we all need to look into for sure.
Sure.
So I, I'm, I completely understand what you're saying.
It's the option.
Yeah, yeah, I feel like there's pushback, I, I think it's responsible to be saying that, so. Um, I just wanted to share like hopefully what I think would be, uh, what I think would be, you know, a huge move yard in that, in that park in the middle. Um, but yeah, we definitely need to find alternatives, better avenues than just focusing on the money. I agree.
I would just like to say, I don't necessarily think that buildings are the basis of commerce. I think that people are, and we should perhaps consider that the children who play in an expanded Nelsonville Commons will grow to be the adults that will build these glorious buildings in which we house this economy that we want. I have nothing else to say other than that.
I wanna clarify about asbestos in the school buildings. There was, we got a grant, a company came in, encaselled all of it, got rid of it. So that's why we were able to go ahead and continue. But there are programs, as these gentlemen are talking about, that can help in all these different ways. But again, I'm not against, Q Casey, in any way.
Definitely, absolutely understand.
I've thrown an idea out there too. You were talking about a basketball court. When I grew up, we were down at the old pool, always out on the basketball court, get right at the pool. That is on the other side of the alley where cars go down. Well, what about looking at moving a military monument over to there and making a green space with benches and stuff? All around that with those monuments, but basketball in the same, same area just down from the park. And then kids aren't back and forth across the alley where cars are coming down, do they?
That's good, I like that a lot. There, like, cause that.
I mean, cause you, you have, you have little kids, little ten year old goes out and, and wants to go to wherever kids are shooting basketball, and he takes off running across the alley where his car comes down.
Yeah.
They don't see him, he starts from behind the car, gets it, but it's all on the same side, because the kids don't go look military monument. So then that could be more of a dedicated area for the military monument with benches and everything over there and keep the basketball right there in the park.
Very good. Okay, any more discussion on uh, the Metrom building? Okay, thank you, Casey, appreciate it. Uh, Mr. Holmes, is Miss Rucker here?
Nope, I don't think so.
Okay, alright, we'll uh, move on to uh, the next item we have, um, we've had some committees, uh, yeah, we had some committee meetings. See, Mr. Flowers, you're the utility chair, correct?
Yes.
Okay, you had a utility committee meeting?
Oh, we did, we had a, uh, we had a utility, uh, utility meeting and uh, we spoke on the Leax water takeover, Leax, right? Yeah, water ta- uh, taking over a portion of our water lines on Robbins. Where is it?
Kimberly.
Kimberly, on Kimberly Road, there's a section that, uh, there where the uh, the water kind of stagnates a little bit and gives us some, some uh, false readings. So we're gonna let them take it over, proposably, we're going to let them take it over and their pressure is higher and they can move the water quicker and more rapidly than what we can way out there.
And they, they have a line just past where we get that in, where if they need to tie it in, we can.
Right.
So that way it's awesome.
And that's no cost to, to, to us really, right?
To us, right.
Yes. And we also spoke about uh, storm sewers, and I believe we're gonna talk about that in ordinance, is right? I think.
Okay, very good. Uh, Mr. Peck, we had Parks and Rec.
The only thing we covered Parks and Rec was uh, having the city manager look into getting some quotes for uh, repairs down at Little Park. That's uh, the only thing we covered.
And uh, we had a planning and development uh, meeting uh, where we had um, discussed um, Ms. Del Rucker, she's currently not here uh, to speak, but um, we've got some discussion on the agenda tonight for comprehensive plan. She would be the one that would be um, uh, her company would be the one that would be uh, updating our current comprehensive plan, uh, as well as developing an HR uh, manual for um, the city, which we do not have in place currently. Um, is there anything else you'd like to speak on that point, Mr. Holmes, about those two items?
Um, no, I, all the council members were set to a proposal.
That's correct.
And um, even though she's not here tonight, I, I hope we can still act on the ordinance.
Okay, alright. Um, we also had a finance uh, meeting. Uh, Mr. Solsol was not able to uh, chair it, so I chaired it for her. We had some appropriations um, that uh, Mr. Saffington brought forth, that'll be on tonight's agenda. Uh, one for um, the code officer, uh, the code office for appropriation for vacant property maintenance. Um, or the lease department, um, we already have money in the K nine fund, we just have, it's not appropriated, so we're appropriating that uh, also tonight. Uh, we discussed the uh, costs of the uh, the audit. Um, and uh, also uh, appropriating more money for the uh, utility costs for the city building uh, to get us through the end of the year. Uh, we discussed, um, a maternity and paternity policy, uh, policy, which we currently do not have in the city. Uh, I believe we have an ordinance for that this evening. Um, we talked about the Metrom building as well, uh, that Mr. Cox just uh, reported on again. Um, Mr. Shapen, do you mind forgetting anything else?
I think I covered it.
Appropriate, okay, alright. Okay, very good. Also, um, Mr. Flowers brought up to uh, council and some emails regarding um, uh, Ms. Sonic um, uh, resigning. She, as the vice president, she sat on a, a committee for SORT. And uh, so with her gone, uh, there's no one from the city of Nelsonville to sit on that uh, committee right now. Um, I, I, were you, were you wishing to do that?
Sure, yeah.
Okay.
Chrissy, Chrissy Cummings, the director of Athens Hocking, she, she said, since I've been coming to when Nancy, when the Sonic couldn't, that it would make be more appropriate for me to just, I'd be glad to do it.
Okay, okay, he's on the utility chair, uh, utility committee too. Is there any discussion about Mr. Flowers taking that role? Any objections to Mr. Flowers taking that role? Alright, do, do we need a formally motion to have him?
Most is gonna be safer, just to have that built in, but.
Okay, I'll motion that uh, Mr. Flowers, so long as he's willing, uh, take the uh, uh, position to sit on the uh, committee for SORT for representing the city of Nelsonville.
Oh, second.
Okay. All right, Park, could you please take the role?
Mr. Solsol?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Flowers?
Sure.
Mr. Pat?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes. Yes. Alright, thank you, Mr. Flowers.
Yes, sir.
Okay, um, we have uh, department updates.
Alright, uh, since the last council update, uh, these are some of the activities that we have to update tonight. Um, you'll see this on all the updates, of course, on the top. We still partner with Red Cross for smoke detector and carbon dioxide detector installed. We currently do not have E C O detectors right now, but we do still have some smoke. Again, this is a part, a partnership through Red Cross, which means our firefighters have to do this at the home. Big installs, nationally, they'll be appropriate, uh, pit wood through the Red Cross to keep that grant going. That's just a reminder that we have that program. Um, grants. Uh, currently have two grants that have been awarded, which was the R C I F grant for medical supplies and stat packs, which are medical supply packets. And R C I F grant, I'm sorry, the PEP grant, which is awarded for fire attack hose straps. Uh, some other devices for fire extinguishers and uh, drywall huts, which is tools that we use when we're fighting a fire. Uh, that was awarded and I think we're waiting appropriations on that. I have a seat in here. Uh, PEP and R C I F.
Thought we did those.
Oh, we did those too.
Might just, might just not, I don't even need to spend so much. Uh, joint training, so uh, we'd like to talk about the training, uh, when we give our updates. These are uh, training events that we um, do that are in excess of the on-duty training that takes place every shift. Uh, so since the last update, we have the annual youth fire academy. Crew members assist with teaching fire academy students during ladder and tower evolution to Hocking College. Uh, that youth academy is a school-aged group. Uh, fire academy from all over the United States that comes to this area, with that academy every year. Every year we, we try to help teach and.
So these are kids not particularly around here, but.
Uh, they're all, they're from different states, most of them are from Ohio, yeah.
That's good, yes, yes.
The Hocking College hosts that event, we just help uh, train and help. Uh, train trainer, hazardous materials training. That uh, our, one of our firefighter and training officer, Queen, attended uh, this class hosted by the Coolwood Fire Department, which was a class was put on through the National Fire Voluntary Fire Safety Council. Uh, eVOL training, Mercy Divisional Operations class, so this is a, the class is required for firefighters, especially when they're transitioning from certain certification levels. We have two firefighters that are in a transition, one class right now, which means we got them in the doors of volunteer firefighters and they have, they're going through classes and taking training to be brought up to the next certification level of firefighter. Uh, Swiftwater Rescue Tech class. I have two firefighters that are attending Swiftwater Rescue Technician classes in October. Uh, this is a week long class that takes place, this class, this is a class takes place in the New River in Fayetteville. And I have firefighter Sanchez, we have firefighter Heinz that will be attending. And once they're done with that class, they will have the proper certifications and they'll be joining our team of Swiftwater Rescue Technicians, Operators and Skewer divers that we have on our fire department now. Uh, Fire Safety Inspector Class, I have Chief Firefighter Dunn, who just started attending on August fifth. Through the Fire Academy, his classes will be done October second. At the end of that day, he will be able to set for a state test. At that time, I, I can then take him out with me, give him fire safety inspection, teach him how to do the fire safety inspections and have him learn inspector. Um, Life Fire Instructor, myself and firefighter Green. Uh, finished some required hours for life fire instructor training. He's one of my fellow fire D M S instructors I have in my department. Um, they had to finish some, some class time and some teach time, some teach back time and some of the burn simulators with students. So we got those certifications now as well. Uh, also since the last update, we responded to, or attended dementia response, the first responders. I attended, um, Officer Klein attended and Chief Oliver attended that class together. And of course, that was posted through E M A's office, a new nine-one-one center, but taught by through the All Firemen Association. And the firefighter one transition class, which is actually taking place right now. I have firefighter Wade and firefighter Van Assett attending that transition class. And with the highest certification, you had a volunteer fire certification, uh, fire one and fire two class. Fire two is your, the, the top tier professional firefighter certification. And that's what these firefighters are actually trying to obtain, and this is one of the first steps to do that. Um, mid-flight landing zone training, that was a training, that was a class, that was part of the class, that part of the paramedic class of Hocking College that myself and crew members attended and helped uh, instruct during that day. And of course, stolen equipment, Solsol, it never did turn up anywhere. I still have to work that with Poncho, and I will check with uh, our insurance company tomorrow and see if that's something that we can just, to stay on plan and get replaced. And my last update, our brush truck was out of service, brush truck is now back in service. And uh, so I have.
Okay, thank you very much, is there any questions for Chief Barber? Alright, thank you very much, appreciate it. Alright.
Evening everyone, my name is Austin, I'm the code officer here for the city of Nelsonville. My name is one of the detailed, nice, Chief Barber, mine's pretty, swimming, cut short. So, since the fourteenth of last month, so less than thirty days, I've uh, issued fifty-six food violations. And um, out of those fifty-six, civil citations were written, two of them, that's actually fines. Um, where this month changed a lot with our permits, totally, we had uh, twenty-three in total. Contractor four, rental fifteen, of course, those were late. Um, zoning, we had one, blocking street, two of them, transient vendor, one, signed permits, one. Totalling um, funds received from that was one thousand one hundred and ten dollars. That's a lot different than last month, last month we didn't have very many, so. Tracking down people that haven't paid their rental fees, that showed clearly here. But other than that, business is still going, I'm still trying to clean up the town as much as I can. And I do believe I have a good team and I work with a lot of good people around there. Since I'm not from here, there's some good people in this town.
We've done a good job.
Other than that, that's all I got. Any questions?
Um, may I ask for the folks who are giving citations, are there resources available for them to have assistance if, you know, they don't have a lead whacker or something? I know a few of them need, usually scrambling to get it figured out, but they got the fire underneath them to get it figured out.
Are you talking about giving like people resources to help come cut grass or something?
I, I've been um, like loaning out our equipment and telling about the Athens Library Tool Program. Um, I just, I didn't know if there's any resources for folks who, the issue is that they're not physically able and don't have the tools to use.
Perhaps they have, will they, will they just go and use it?
So what usually happens, um, that I'll give out a notice, and they have, within, there's certain timeframes they have to respond. If they continue and they do not respond, then I move to citations. But if I have someone actually responding, I will work with them. So it's, and if they need resources, we have the great Google, Google helps a lot. There's um, tabs in the hallway there, you can pick for uh, development, basically. They come in and they'll help you for good fees. They're not charged out the yin and yang.
We, we also have a code enforcement meeting, southeastern Ohio Code Enforcement Meeting. And uh, we meet like every, maybe every quarter or every two months, I think it's every quarter. And there's all kinds of resources that comes, like if your, your uh, your windows are broke out and you can, or to put them in, that cat comes in and helps you. So there's all kinds of resources there that come to that meeting to tell code enforcement how to help these people. The, the goal is not to make money. The goal is to improve the house for the person to live in, that's the whole goal, and that's his goal. You know, and, and so that's what we were trying to do. So I think I told you about this upcoming more than if I haven't, I did, didn't I?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, alright, okay, that's gonna be a load.
But the, it also refers to the fifty-six, I mean, there's a bunch of violations out there, but most of them get resolved. So that does a kind of citation phase, but if they don't get resolved, of course, they leave the farm.
Yeah, I, I appreciate what you're doing, I just wanna make sure I can help my neighbors as much as I can.
Okay, any other questions for uh, Mr. Kelly? No, thank you, thank you for. Thank you. Thank you for always coming with a smile.
Of course.
Well, I don't have anything actually put together. I mean, nobody knows. This is always busy time of the year, Fred the Hill is getting everything ready. There's projects going, been going on. I just want to give an update on projects. See a lot of people on the wonderful Facebook complaining about roads closed. Canal Street is closed for two weeks. It's shut down for two weeks and they will be back to continue working. They said they're still going to meet the deadline at the end of October. Washington Street will be closed down starting next month. It'll start between Adams and Madison and we'll try and just do it a block at a time. There's a new ten-inch water main going from Adams Street to Jefferson Street. And all the services will be tied over to the new ten-inch main. That project will continue. It goes, it's got a block of Grovesman. It's got some Jackson Street and it's replacing the main line and Cookville from Twelfth Street there at the high school. Because that's our, that's our water line. We earn it. And we're in all of this water.
Yeah, we took that over from the county.
I relived it.
Yeah, I relived it. Four years ago, we, we took it over. The line is very, very, very old down through there.
So question, by the way, West Washington, by the way, looks great. The sidewalk looks terrific.
Sidewalk, unfortunately, it took a little bit longer than we wanted. There was a subcontractor in here that didn't like me very well because I can't make them tear concrete back out because it didn't look right for what the project cost, which it was not a city project. The survey is that was not a city project. It was through Hat Cap and sale. But we are taking ownership when it's done. I made them tear concrete out three times because I wasn't going to take over something that was subpar, especially with what was being paid for.
Yeah, I understand. We had some concrete going back to properties.
There was no green. It was a bubble out going back to the building instead of towards the street.
The trees look great. They look terrific too. And I know the light poles are on.
Light poles, they're saying November.
So quick question on the light poles, and this might be a discussion to, you know, you might be able to have with Mr. Chappington, Mr. Holmes. But I was going down there, um, West Washington from the hardware store and I, I saw that what the new lights looked like versus what the ones on the other side of the road. And I know we're not touching, you know, I guess that south side of Wa- West Washington right now. But is it possible, do you think, that we might be able to say use like Betty Johnson's fund or something to buy, order and buy additional poles so all the poles match?
That would be a discussion we would have and then it would have to go to the committee. The lights are ten thousand dollars.
And I'm not even sure how many lights there are.
We had a meeting Friday morning. Friday morning with Hat Cap and Steph, we talked about a lot of different funding options and things where they could help us with possible storm sewers and sidewalks. And we talked about a lot of things and that. They're going to take it to commissioners and doctors because there is money available for different things and no city manager before Fred is, is, pulled them in for a meeting and set and had a meeting and there was six of us in there.
Nice. Very good. So I'm sorry, I didn't mean to like boberg that. So did you have, you look like you have something.
I do. I, I did notice the Washington Street sidewalk project. There does still seem to be quite a whip when the folks are pulling into the post office or that alleyway kind of by the maker's loft. What? Um, honestly, before I went on vacation. So that's, that's where I was going to ask you about that. When I got back, it was all blocked off for. Break the hills. Okay.
Asphalt down through and raising it.
Okay.
It's a nice smooth transition coming out.
They're not going to do it the other side of the road, are they?
As far as sidewalk?
Yeah. It wasn't there.
Thank you for your attention to that or picking the keys.
Yep. So then, and so you said the Canal Street shut down currently then and will regain, will start back up then after Fred the Hill.
Two weeks.
Two weeks, okay.
They had another job that they were in for to.
Okay.
I have a question, Jason. If you're on West Washington Street coming to Logan and going into the square and you would turn in cable to alley because you wanted to be able to go to the bank there. Something isn't right. It scrapes your.
So they're coming down to find that water line and then we're going to do some repairs down through there and try to do what we can, but we can only take the alley down so far because of the way it is on the buildings and the sidewalk. The road's a lot lower than what the alley is, but we can only take out so much of it because of the sidewalks.
How do we get, I, tonight a gentleman stopped me coming over here. He had, he pulled his muffler. He has fiberglass. Anyway. He said, woman, do you know how I could get help with this? And I said, yeah, she should go over to the city building. I said, the service director or the city manager will be able to help you. So I gave him the telephone number because I felt bad if it, you know, pulled it loose. And he was obviously struggling the same as I was then.
There was a very large pothole there, renewed, well, we then we put asphalt down Thursday. We passed holes in the playground. So we get to a very large hole right there when you pull in the alley.
I should thank council or whoever was responsible for addressing the problem on Mason City Hill with the sewers now that was created because of issues. And that seems to be taking care of itself or played a role in that. Thank you.
We had a tanker replaced over at the lift station.
I'm sure those people are so appreciative that you're willing to do that. Thank you.
Mr. Cowan, I, I've heard that there's been some complaints about parking on the public square. Have you, have you been notified of this or?
I have. I, I think it's best, so the public square is public parking. My personal opinion, I think we should do what was talked about years ago, the removable ballards and put them across the square and completely shut the square down and parking and make it walking on them. Restaurants would be able to put tables out front. There would be more room. One end, pick either end where the yellow hash marks are at, where you can go straight or around the square. Put in a stage. We're supposed to be getting Dora. It would be a wonderful opportunity. But the ballards are removable. You got to get trailers on there for anything. You had something going downtown, any kind of event, you could pop the ballards out and bring them right in. That's my opinion.
Okay. Alright, I think that's all I have for Mr. Cowan. Any, anybody else have any questions or comments? Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it. But do you have a question?
It's not for him.
Oh, okay.
But I was wondering if I, I didn't make this during citizens' comments, but I was wondering if I could make a comment right now.
I have no objection.
Should I stand? What should I do?
You would say feel. You might break down too, so.
Break down?
Oh, I thought you said she was going to break down too.
No. So I don't know if everyone knows me. My name is Abby Niff. I was the reporter for Athens Independent covering Nelsonville the past like year. I'm leaving, but I just wanted to like say no, but. And to introduce Shiloh, who will be replacing me, her wonderful coworker. Yeah, this is their recording. Oh, God. Usually like being in the back and being like, hold them, ready things down and stuff, so.
You know, it has a.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I like that.
No. Yeah, you better not use your software. Um, but yeah, just wanted to say goodbye. I know. With reporting and like in southeast Ohio, people come and go, and so I didn't want to just like ghost you guys.
Where are you going?
Oh, God. That's what I'm trying to figure out. Well, yes, but like, it depends on if I get the job. So fingers crossed, everyone manifests that for yourself, so. But I wish you guys luck in your government journey. I've learned a lot about how government functions from you guys, so.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Well, good luck to you. And Shiloh, welcome. Thank you. Alright, so, alright, so we got the firm and updates. Before we go to, do you have a law director update, Mr. Rowe?
No, other than there are some matters for executive session, but other than that.
Okay. Alright, then before we go into the readings for this evening then, I would like to make the motion to make the findings of the previous city manager of public document.
Investigation.
Of the investigation. If there's a second to that.
A second.
There was a, we hired special counsel doing, do an investigation to, on the former city manager. And I'm motioning that we make that. It has not been a public document up to this point. It's been a confidential document that our counsel, special counsel holds, so. Yep, okay.
Okay.
You mean to make that public?
Correct.
Okay.
Can you name him just so they don't get me confused in that?
I said former city, city manager. Thomas Kandjemmy.
Okay. I was former city.
Not twenty years ago. There must be a statue of him.
The one's a future city manager, Brett Holmes.
Okay.
Yes, please.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
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 Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Please go to the stall. Yes.
Very good. So then I'd like to then now make the motion to have those findings reviewed by legal counsel for any actual items.
A second.
Give the clerk a second to.
So will you explain what that means?
That just means I'm motioning that we have that reviewed by legal counsel to see if there's any actual items in there by this, the city to see prostitution or whatever that made the findings. What are in the findings? You read the findings, correct?
I read some of them, yes. I didn't really, oh, no.
Okay. So what we're going to do is have the legal counsel go over and see if there's anything in there where the city could recoup funds or if there's anything that's actionable in there legally, since it's now going to be made a public document.
So we paid some money, one two thousand dollars.
The taxpayers did. That's why we're making it public.
Yeah, but shouldn't they have told us that there's restitution involved in it?
That wasn't the scope of the investigation, was not to provide, to determine or on behalf of counsel if there were actual items. The, the, the terms of that contract were to, was that for just that findings, right? So they did an investigation, they found those items, gave us sixty-four pages of a document. Yep. And then, so it's up to counsel then to determine if, you know, have it reviewed by counsel to determine if it's actionable.
So is this going to involve putting out more money for a lawyer?
Shouldn't.
They can do it.
Well, I don't know if Mr. Rowe can do it. I mean, I just think that, because he was recused from it.
Yeah, I know he was.
So, yeah, so. We have, we have special counsel on, on retainer currently, so.
We have a special counsel.
Okay, clerk, please call the roll.
Now, with those findings, we had.
So, Mr. Lawson, if we're going to discuss, you want to discuss that loud enough so everybody can hear it?
I just have, basically, still, the, the counsel, special counsel we got was for finding out if we had just cause for termination. This bill would be for us to figure out and have our attorney or an attorney check to find out if there's any legal restitution that we could get from the findings.
Okay. Any further discussion?
I don't even know how to vote on this. I, I haven't got my answer as far as are we going to pay now more money to an attorney?
Well, we're paying an attorney every day anyway from the city currently. Well, yes, he is an attorney, correct?
No, I mean, are we paying him or are we paying another attorney?
I didn't, we, we will probably pay an attorney to review the document, yes. I didn't name Mr. Rowe specifically because he was recused from the investigation initially.
I'm going to have to vote now.
Mr. Pack?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Can I ask for clarity? When we talk about already having a special counsel, the retainer set for that special counsel, would it, would this fall under what we've already hired them to do?
Sure.
Or would we have to consider additional minimum fees?
That I wouldn't know. I would probably pose that to Mr. Rowe. I will serve McLaren House, so I'm more than happy to do that. Just have a question, so that way it doesn't, a lot of dollars are passed down. If that's the case though, if that is the case, that it would cost the city additional monies though, that would be an ordinance that we would have to then pass to, you know, to pay them for that. So we can also, at that point, we can discuss it again at that point.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And so, Mr. Rowe, you'd say you did not have a report then, just to know? Okay. Alright, Miss Clerk. Your show?
Okay, we have ordinance forty-five twenty-five. Would somebody like to introduce it?
Someone introduce it.
Thank you. An ordinance setting a new utility fee schedule whereas there is need for the city of Nelsonville to establish and adopt a new utility fee schedule to adequately meet the needs of the city's utility services, which this is provides to its utility service customers, including residents and businesses. Whereas the utility committee of Nelsonville City Council met on August fourth, two thousand forty-five and recommends to city council a new utility fee schedule. Whereas city council finds the utility fee schedule recommended by the utility committee is appropriate and desirable for the city and it is in the best interest of the city and its utility services customer. Now therefore, the order dated by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio, is follows. City council hereby establishes and adopts the utility service fee schedule attached here to and incorporated herein by reference as exhibit A. Council hereby finds and determines that all formal actions taken relative to the adoption of this ordinance were taken in an open meeting of the Nelsonville City Council and that all deliberations of council and of its committees, if any, which resulted in formal action were taken in meetings open to the public and for compliance with applicable legal requirements. The ordinance shall be in full force and effect at the earliest time permitted by law duly enacted by council on second reading the eighth day of September, two thousand twenty-five.
Could I ask a question of one of the ones?
Sure.
It's just the first reading.
Sure.
Um, but on the exhibit at the bottom of the table where it says test water meter, there doesn't seem to be a, the defined for that service.
There is actually a cost to that. It's actually, I think of it, it's two hundred and fifty. I'm not sure. Yeah. So, so the city has to currently, to test the water meter. We don't test it in-house. There's a company that has to test, do it for us. And I know those fees have been going up with the newer meters. The fee is two fifty.
Do you want that added to your head?
Yes, please. Sorry, I was going off of hard of the meeting.
I think there might be a typo in the very, very last line. I think there might be a typo in the very, very last line, so.
Oh, yeah, I see that.
Probably should be meter that matter.
Thank you, Ms. Harmon.
So, I got questions. What comes back meter bad? We gotta charge people?
The way we do it now, if it comes back bad, we need it.
They don't charge them.
We don't charge them.
Cause those new meters do, do, do go bad.
Well, anything can go bad. It's gonna buy a brand-new car.
Yeah, I, but I blocked one of, what I was saying.
Dealership.
You're, you're, you're gonna charge, you're gonna charge somebody because the city owns the meter? Oh, city owns the meter. Individual value.
No, but we, that's always been the policy.
So, when we, when, when we do it, is when they ask to have, if they, somebody asks to have their meter tested, cause we don't have two thousand meters lying back there to swap them out. So, when somebody asks to have their meter tested, we send them have it tested. If it comes back good, they're responsible to pay for. If it comes back that there is something on with it, then we're responsible.
Yeah, well, I mean, half part says it's can't, can't afford eight hundred, eight, what is it, eight hundred and fifty bucks to get their meter checked because they feel it's bad?
It should be eight hundred and thirty dollars.
It's two hundred and fifty. Two fifty. I don't know, it's, it says removable meter is, is three fifty and reinstall it five hundred?
This is, um, temporary disconnection of service, certification, et cetera.
That's still.
Uh, if temporary disconnection is requested and property owner does not want to pay minimum, um, they remove the meter at that point at the cost of three hundred and fifty dollars and reinstall it later.
Ah, I read that wrong. I'm sorry.
Okay. Okay. All right, very good. Thank you. Ms. Harmony?
All right.
Could you read ordinance forty-six twenty-five?
Somebody let me introduce it again?
I'll introduce it one more time.
An ordinance setting the authorized staff in the city department and repealing ordinance thirty-four twenty-five. Whereas existing staffing ordinance have been amended several times. Whereas the purpose of this ordinance is to accurately track and reflect all amendments throughout the twenty-twenty-five calendar year ordinance. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio, as follows. Staffing in the police department is as follows. One full-time chief, two full-time sergeants, nine full-time police officers, and one full-time clerk. Police department pay chart, exhibit A, attached to two and incorporated herein by reference of the seventh and of the ordinance. Staffing in the fire department is as follows. One full-time chief, one full-time lieutenant, one full-time senior firefighter, two full-time firefighters, and thirteen part-time firefighters. Fire department pay chart is in exhibit A, attached to two, and incorporated herein by reference. Staffing in the utility department is as follows. One full-time service director, one full-time wastewater operator of record, one full-time, I'm sorry, one part-time fill-in water operator of record, and eleven utility technicians. The hourly pay chart is exhibit A, attached to two, incorporated herein by reference. Staffing in the auditor's office is as follows. One elected city auditor, one full-time deputy auditor, and additionally there is a city treasurer elected. There's auditor, deputy auditor, and treasurer pay charts are attached as exhibit A. Staffing in the man, city manager's office is as follows. One full-time city manager, one full-time code officer, one full-time administrative assistant, two full-time account clerks, and one part-time law director, and one part-time city prosecutor. There may be one acting city manager assigned by the city council in a card, in accordance, according to the charter. Those additional duties will come with a twenty-five hundred dollar per month stipend to cover the additional responsibilities and liabilities. City manager, code officer, administrative assistant, law director, and city prosecutor pay charts. Um, city manager's rate, referred to his contract. Code officer pay scale is in exhibit A, attached here to and incorporated herein by reference. Administrative assistant pay scale is attached as exhibit A. Two full-time account clerks pay scale is also attached in exhibit A. Law director and prosecutor rate, you should refer to their respective contracts. Staffing for one council clerk and seven council members is as follows. Council clerk pay scale at a monthly rate, exhibit A, attached to two, and incorporated herein by reference. See, council member's salary is one hundred dollars per month. Council president's salary is two hundred dollars per month. Seasonal staffing, one seasonal aquatic center manager at ten thousand five hundred dollars per season, up to three head lifeguard at fifteen dollars per hour, and up to twenty part-time aquatic center lifeguard attendants at fourteen dollars per hour. Up to twelve seasonal staff to assist any department as directed by the city manager and to serve between June first and August thirty-first at fourteen dollars per hour, not to exceed forty, no, I'm sorry, forty hours per week. The city manager is hereby directed to establish a summer seasonal staffing program to encourage participation among local high school students in the community. Benefits and offers for full-time union employees will match approved language and their expected collective bargaining agreements. This may include PTO, insurance coverages, certification, and training pay stipends, and more. Higher department heads, benefits, and offerings, and limitations for the police chief, fire chief, service director, water plant director, police clerk, and deputy auditor will operate according to past and best city practices, employee handbook, and set policies. This includes insurance coverage, PTO, vacation payout rules, pension pickup, and more. Part-time non-seasonal employees shall be offered dental, eye, and life insurance at full cost through the employee. Health insurance will not be offered for part-time employees. Nothing in this ordinance shall be used or construed to overrule or repeal future pay increases or offered benefits already approved by contract or city council ordinance. The council hereby finds that this ordinance was adopted in a meeting open to the public as required by applicable law. This ordinance shall be backdated and made effective as of January first, two thousand twenty-five. The city auditor shall take all steps necessary to complete and effectuate any pay increase which shall be enacted pursuant to the provisions of this ordinance. Ordinance thirty-four twenty-five is hereby abolished and repealed. By members of council voting to dispense with the two days of the year. The rules are hereby suspended for this ordinance, and this ordinance is hereby enacted on first reading, pursuant to O R C seven thirty-one point one five and Nelsonville City Charter section four point zero-nine through four point one-one. This ordinance is hereby passed as an emergency measure pursuant to O R C seven thirty-one point thirty and article four, section four point zero-nine through four point one-one of Nelsonville City Charter as an emergency in the operation of the city government, as the city needs to ensure its continued staffing levels without interruption, and is necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, safety, morals, or welfare of the city. The mis- ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption, duly enacted by council on first reading on the eleventh day of two thousand twenty-five.
All right, that was helpful. Okay, uh, motion to suspend the rules, please. So, move. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a council discussion on suspension of the rules?
Clerk, please call the roll.
Okay.
There's a, oh.
Can I add something really quick?
Yes.
The.
On suspension?
Oh, no, sorry.
Sorry, okay. I'm sorry. Clerk, please hold the roll.
Mr. Pack?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Sol?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yeah.
Flowers?
Yeah. Motion to adopt?
Summon.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion on adoption? Would you like to speak up now, Mr. Sappington?
Yes. Sorry. No, my place of time is that, no. The, I wanted to, if we could note, if council's agreeable, I just didn't fully spell it out, and I just know how state audits go, and I won't be here in a year to, to do the fill-in for this. Just help the next round of folks in my position. If the minutes could just note that in the police staffing, council has already authorized a temporary clerk because that person is training to replace the current one. So, for a few weeks, there's technically two clerks, even though this ordinance doesn't say this, say that. Uh, but so that person could begin training with the previous clerk or soon be previous. And then, um, so, so, not, not to interrupt you real quick, then, Mr. Rowe, then, is it okay just to note that in the minutes? Cause I don't want this, or we need to, I have to reread that to add that.
Yeah, I think, I think that's. That would be, okay. Um, after, uh, I'll make that motion after we, just after we vote on adopting the legislation agreement that gets approved, so.
This, I just, real quick second thing, there is in exhibit A, these are my fault, by the way, this is, has nothing to do with Rowe's. Um, Mr. Rowe, excuse me, or Miss Harmony, um, uh, the second one was under section three, staffing the utility department. In the exhibit, it says water operator, but here in the listing, at listing three, it doesn't, it actually says part-time fill-in water operator. I think that's referring to the wastewater filling operator?
Oh.
But then the regular water operators in the exhibit.
Yes, okay, yeah.
I think it's, I think it's fine because it covers, like, all bases are covered.
Yeah.
But if the minutes could also reflect that distinction, that there is. Okay. How about I just, if they approve of it, I'll email Susan. How's that sound? I just know audit, state auditors are perspicacious, and I won't be here to walk them through the minutes next year, so. Yep, just something I noticed, that's all.
Okay, thank you. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Sappington. Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the table on adoption.
Do we have a council discussion?
Yep.
With me. Um. Is this a previous ordinance that we're updating?
Correct.
With new figures?
Yes. So, we discussed, actually, this is one, a line item that I forgot on the, uh, finance committee. The part-time, uh, what Mr. Sappington was just referring to, the part-time fill-in on the wastewater treatment plant. So, the, when our plant operator goes on vacation.
Right.
We have a temporary, yes. So, we're updating that, uh, the pay from fifty dollars to sixty dollars.
Got it. So, is that the whole, everything we range the same except that item?
Uh, correct, I don't believe there was another item that we had in.
The office changed, too.
The.
What changed?
What changed?
The utility billing office is changing here as well. Remember, we talked in the finance committee about it was improper accounting procedure to have the billing office under the finance office?
Yeah, so, yeah, so it'll be in. Or will they, they, well, they'll be under, technically, under, um, the city manager, uh.
But, but, but the only figure should change was that sixty dollars an hour, from fifty to sixty dollars an hour, right?
Right.
Okay.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
Any other council discussion? Okay, clerk, call the roll, please.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Joseph Sol?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yeah.
Mr. Flowers?
Yes.
Mr. Pack?
Yes. And, uh, I will make the motion, um, to reflect in the minutes, please, Miss Harmony, that, um, for Mr. Sappington, that, um, uh, the, uh, section three, was it section three?
Yes, it was.
Yes, it was, section three referring.
Referring. That there's a water and wastewater.
Water and a wastewater.
Yeah, and then there's a temporary clerk training.
And there's also a temporary clerk in, in training in the police department.
Her weight is this, the same as the clerk's?
Yeah, and that position will be eliminated once, um, the other clerk vacates the position and the new clerk assumes that position, so.
And the goal, I should have said this, the goal of me speaking up on this is council's already authorized those things. I just don't want some, uh, an out-of-town auditor to be looking at it next year and say, or think to themselves, like, oh, it looks like council's removed those things with this. I just want to make sure that there's not any room for misunderstanding of that.
And I appreciate that. We did, we are not the leaders of positions, so, thank you. Okay?
Okay.
Did you get that?
Made a motion.
I made a motion. Yes, I did.
Okay.
Mr. Lawson, sir.
Call.
Yes, please.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Joseph Sol?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yeah.
Mr. Flowers?
Yes.
Yeah?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Ordinance forty-seven twenty-five passes. Or, I'm sorry, forty-six twenty-five, forty-six twenty-five passes. Okay, uh, ordinance forty-seven twenty-five. I'll introduce it.
An ordinance establishing a city paid maternity and paternity leave policy. Whereas the city of Nelsonville does not currently have a paid maternity, paternity leave policy. Whereas in order to be able to attract the best possible candidate for city employment position, it is necessary for the city to be able to offer attractive paternity, paternity benefits, including paid leave. Whereas city council finds it is in the best interest of the city to adopt a maternity, paternity leave policy. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio, as follows. City council hereby establishes and adopts a paid maternity and paternity leave policy attached here to and incorporated herein by reference of exhibit A. Council hereby finds and determines that all formal actions taken relative to the adoption of this ordinance were taken in an open meeting of the Nelsonville City Council, and that all deliberations of council and of its committees, if any, which resulted in informal action were taken in meetings open to the public in full compliance with applicable legal requirements. The ordinance shall be in full force and effect at the earliest time permitted by law, duly enacted by council on second reading the eighth day of September two thousand twenty-five. Let me give the call back.
Okay, thank you. Uh, okay. Uh, ordinance forty-eight twenty-five, please.
Do you want to introduce that?
Okay, go introduce.
An ordinance establishing Nelsonville Building Department and authorizing a request for the Ohio Board Building Standards for certification of a sub-department of Washington County Building Department, B B A Southeast Ohio Building Department for enforcement of the State of Ohio Building Code for residential and non-residential construction. Whereas council finds the need of the city of Nelsonville require establishment of local enforcement of the State of Ohio Building Code. Whereas the city desires to enforce the State of Ohio Building Code for the purpose of providing within the city uniform standards and requirements for the erection, construction, repair, alteration, and maintenance of buildings specified in sections three, seven, eight, one point zero six of the Ohio Revised Code. Whereas the city requires the establishment of the Nelsonville Building Department to enforce the State of Ohio Building Code within the city. Whereas Nelsonville City Charter, section six point zero-two, provides, quote, "The council may by ordinance or resolution create, change, or abolish any office, department, division, or subunit of any department, or division, or agency other than those established by the charter. Council may assign additional duties to any department established by this charter, but may not discontinue or assign any other office, department, or agency, any function assigned by this charter to a particular office, department, or agency," unquote. Whereas council finds it necessary and in the best interest of the city to request certification from the Ohio Board Building Standards for the Nelsonville Building Department to be a sub-department of the Washington County Building Department, B B A Southeast Ohio Building Department, to serve as the enforcement authority and to accept and approve plans and specifications to make inspections in accordance with the Ohio Building Code for residential and non-residential instruction, I'm sorry, construction within the city. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio, as follows. The Nelsonville Building Department is hereby created and established. The Nelsonville Building Department shall have full authority to enforce all laws, statutes, and regulations as provided or unauthorized in the Ohio Revised Code and that Ohio Administrative Code. One certification has been approved by the Ohio Board of Building Standards. Council hereby finds enforcement by the Nelsonville Building Department shall occur as a sub-department of the Washington County Building Department, B B A Southeast Ohio Building Department. Ohio Administrative Code four-one zero-one one-one, the Ohio Building Code, and four-one zero-one point two, the Ohio Mechanical Code, and four-one zero-one, the Ohio Plumbing Code, as promulgated by the Ohio Board of Building Standards, shall apply and be enforced within the city of Nelsonville, Ohio. However, the Athens County Board of Health may also enforce the Ohio Plumbing Code in the city. The ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after the earliest period permitted by law. following promulgation of the Ohio Building Code and Ohio Mechanical Code and Ohio Plumbing Code by the Ohio Board of Building Standards. Through the certification process, adoption, and effective date of certification issued by the Ohio Board of Building Standards. The city manager is hereby authorized and directed to submit an application to the Ohio Board of Building Standards, who put requests being the board to certify the Nelsonville Building Department as a sub-department of the Washington County Building Department, DVA Southeast Ohio Building Department, for enforcement, I'm sorry, for enforcement of the Ohio Building Code for residential and non-residential construction within the city. With the condition, Southeast Ohio Building Department shall exercise the enforcement authority as necessary in accordance with the Ohio Building Code within the limits of the city. Nothing in this ordinance shall be construed as obligating payment of any funds by the city. Rather, this ordinance shall not financially obligate the city of Nelsonville unless and such, such financial obligation is approved by separate ordinance duly enacted by council. Council hereby finds and determines that all formal actions taken relative to the adoption of this ordinance were taken in an open meeting of the Nelsonville City Council, and that all deliberations of council and of its committees, if any, which resulted in formal action were taken in meetings open to the public in full compliance with applicable legal requirements. Five members of council voting to dispense with the two readings of this ordinance. The rules are hereby suspended for this ordinance, and this ordinance shall be enacted on first reading pursuant to O R C seven thirty-one-point-one-five and Nelsonville City Charter, Section four point zero-nine through four point one-one. This ordinance is hereby passed as an emergency measure pursuant to O R C seven thirty-one-point-thirty and Nelsonville City Charter, Section four, Section four point zero-nine through four point one-one. As an emergency in the operation of the city government as the city needs to begin its certification request to the Ohio Board of Building Standards for approval for the establishment of the Nelsonville Building Department, and is necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, safety, morals, or welfare of the city, the ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption. Duly enacted by council on second, um, first reading the eleventh day of August two thousand twenty-five.
Okay, uh, motion to suspend the rules. Our motion to suspend the rules, third second?
Second.
Any discussion on suspension?
Why are we suspending the rules and making this an emergency when it's going to take a little bit of time? To get everything set up as far as the cost and everything else? Because this is, even though it says no cost to Nelsonville, there's going to be a charge to us. What's the difference now with us having the state come in? Though the state doesn't do residential, the state does commercial, and that fee is charged in with the permit that the individual pulls. Once we go in through and we got our own board, we get our own, uh, building department, we're going to have to hire in a plant examiner, a certified electrical inspector, a certified plumbing inspector, a certified H B A C inspector. So, so I can't say that it'd be an, an emergency for us to do that.
Okay, so, no, we're not hiring all of those individuals. This company is actually, we're hiring this company to do all of those inspections. They have those inspectors, they do it for the state. Um, I was going to wait till discussion on adopting, but they're actually, in the county of Athens, is, we're going to be dealing with this company anyway for plumbing, because the county health department is hiring them to do all plumbing inspections in the county. Any fees that are charged for permits are going to be paid directly to them, not to the city. And they're going to be responsible for inspecting throughout the process to ensure that it's completed in compliance. They're going to be the ones doing the, all of the state inspections.
Who pays them?
The individual, so if you want to add on to your house and you want to, you need a building, you know, permit, you're going to be, you're going to be paying for the permit through them.
And they do all the inspection?
They do all the inspection.
So they'll be our building department?
Correct. Okay, so is there discussion on suspension of the rules? Besides, um, Mr. Lawson's point of, I don't see why it's such a rush to have to get the supplement.
I'm the one who suggested it be done under emergency, and the reason I, I recommend that is that I know people who have been taken advantage of. In this community, um, it's common belief that you do not need a building permit, that you can do anything you want to in the city of Nelsonville. That is not correct. Also, unfortunately, there is a common belief that if you have a pickup truck or a nail abr, you're a contractor. That is also not correct. I know, I've had complaints, and I also know a neighbor who has been taken advantage. The reason I wanted it in emergency, this protects the citizen. It's not going to be a burden on good contractors. There won't even be a blip in the road. On contractors who are not doing it by the book, it will drive them out and they can go someplace else. So the reason I wanted it under emergency, this needs to protect our citizens. And, uh, this is a service that you, it's a great service that you guys can provide. And, uh, if it's not done right, they got to go back and redo it. And they come back and they do a re-inspection, they don't charge for it, they'll come back as many times as necessary.
What are the fees like for these people, like, what are homeowners actually paying? Like, like, I understand people are getting scammed, but what, if we're just going to cost-benefit analysis here, what are the fees for the, like, what are you paying extra when you go get your permit or whatever to have these guys come through and tell you what the state wants to?
Well, not, what's happening is that we're not having any inspection.
I know, I'm asking you what the dollar amount is for this.
I don't know, I can't, I don't.
All right.
Yeah.
Did you say you had a neighbor that got scammed?
Absolutely, absolutely, and, uh, she had a carport done, okay? My insurance agent called me and said, Fred, can you help her out? So my brother-in-law, I went down, we redid the whole, whole thing. Took all the material down, had to go buy new material. They only put up two before, we put up two but sixes or two before the process. Um, she paid an enormous amount of money of what she told us, and he came back and asked for more and wanted the money upfront. There were no inspections, I mean, it was.
Would it been, would there have been an inspection on the carport?
Oh, absolutely.
Just structurally, right?
Yeah, yeah, and, and what we're, what, the purpose of this is, th- those contractors who are not legit, there's some place else for you work, not in Nelsonville.
Are we increasing the cost on somebody who can barely afford to get the work done on their home?
No.
That's trying to come into, we have already stated that there's going to be an increased cost to the person getting the service for this, we've already stated.
Not, not all, not all, um, not all renovations on homes are permissible, uh, situations.
Like, I honestly, I.
If you're afraid.
I don't know enough about this to plead for it, like, honestly, like, I don't know enough about what's permissible and what's not permissible. None of that was made clear, I don't understand at what point in time a person is, there are people in our community who can barely afford the repairs we're about to force them to make on their homes. To add anything to the bottom line of that is almost sick. Yes, ma'am.
So, okay, I'm, I'm, can I, can I hold you real quick? I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Sorry, sir.
No, 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 you're okay, no, you're okay, we, we're still on suspension of the rule.
Oh, my bad, so, um, so, and we've got a motion and a second, I'm, no, no, you're okay, we'll, we'll get to that here in just a moment.
So, we can vote up or down suspension of the rules, then, um, pardon, will you please call, call? Um, no, we don't have to do all suspension.
If there's a sol, it's Dean. Mr. Lawson?
No.
Ms. Flower?
No.
Yeah?
No.
Mr. Henderson?
No. All right, so suspension is down, so before there's, um, I think there should be next a motion to amend to strike paragraph nine, which is the emergency and suspension of the rules. Okay, all right, I will make that motion to strike paragraph nine from the ordinance.
I'll sign it.
Does that just mean we're going to take out a paragraph and vote on it anyway?
No, it's, it's. Paragraph nine is the emergency and suspension of the rules, so just saying, striking that, so.
So we'll carry it over?
Well, it'll be gone so that the next meeting will be the second, that'll be the second.
Yeah, that's what I meant.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
So the next page will be, yeah, okay.
Correct, um, so, would it be appropriate, because normally then it goes to second, we don't typically have council discussion then until second reading.
Right.
On the motion, so would it be appropriate to have council discussion now? And I know we had a citizen that had a question.
I withdraw, withdraw my question.
Oh, okay, all right, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to.
No, 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 you answered it already.
Okay. That's, that's a pledge of counsel, they want to, I'll write now, or we do it for next. So here's, just because it's already a long meeting and we've got more to go, so why don't we reserve conversation? Mr. Holmes, can we have, uh, more information emailed to us than pertaining to, um, the, the business, the fees, um, partnership, even possibly even have the gentleman come speak, uh, at the next council meeting?
Sure. Okay. If I could share just one thing with you?
Absolutely.
City Logan utilizes this company, and that's how, uh, both Austin and, uh, Michelle came across it. Is that one of my questions was, is it, why do we have, why do we require a building permit if we don't have any inspection? And they said, well, the city of Logan does, and it doesn't cost them a thing. So when I met with Mayor Farnsworth Feller up there, and also with their co-officer, which I can't remember the name, they claimed to be Joe Poses. Um, so I said, give me the information. I had the gentleman from Southeast Ohio Builders come in and talk to us, that if council would like him to come and talk at the next meeting, I would be happy to, and I can also talk to Joe Poses and get more information from the city of Logan.
Correct, okay, thank you very much, appreciate it. Okay, um, for ordinance forty-nine twenty-five, please.
He didn't, he didn't vote on that, did he?
No, it was, uh.
Second reading, right?
Yeah, forty-eight twenty-five went the second reading.
But you voted to strike.
We didn't vote, oh, we didn't vote, oh, I.
Second motion.
Yeah, you already did, or, or you did, yeah.
All right, sorry, I got ahead of myself there.
That's okay. Joseph Sol?
Yes.
What, what are we voting on now? Uh, striking the suspension of the rules, uh, language.
Okay, again, uh, yes.
Ms. Flower?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes, thank you, thank you for catching that for me. Okay, so now, that'll go to second reading, uh, we are on to forty, ordinance forty-nine twenty-five, please. Oh, and I will, uh, I will introduce it.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to engage Wise Economy Workshop LLC to prepare, sorry, to prepare a human resources manual and policy for the city and update the city's comprehensive plan appropriating funds thereto in any clarity in emergency. Whereas council finds it is necessary and in the best interest of the city to prepare a thorough and comprehensive human resources manual and policy for the city. Whereas city council finds it is necessary and in the best interest of the city to update its comprehensive plan. Whereas Wise Economic Workshop LLC has indicated its willingness to provide professional services relating near to. Whereas the city has engaged previously Wise Economic Workshop LLC for professional services. Now therefore be ordained by the Council of the City of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. The city manager is hereby directed and authorized to engage Wise Economy Workshop LLC to provide professional services to the city relating to developing a human resources manual and policy and updating the city's comprehensive plan in accordance with the description of services provided in Exhibits A and B, which are attached here to and incorporated herein by reference. Council hereby appropriate the allowance of fifteen thousand seven hundred fifty dollars and forty-eight thousand four hundred dollars for the professional service fee to Wise Economy Workshop LLC for the spoke of work described in Exhibits A and B. Council hereby finds and determines that all formal actions taken relative to the adoption of this ordinance were taken in an open meeting of the Nelsonville City Council, and that all deliberations of council and of its committees, if any, which resulted in formal action were taken in meetings open to the public in full compliance with applicable legal requirements. Five members of council voting to dispense with the two readings of this ordinance. The rules are hereby suspended for this ordinance, and this ordinance is hereby enacted on the first reading pursuant to O R C seven thirty-one-point-one-five and Nelsonville City Charter, Sections four point zero-nine through four point one-one. This ordinance is hereby passed as an emergency measure pursuant to O R C seven thirty-one-point-thirty and Nelsonville City Charter, Article Four, Section four point zero-nine through four point one-one, as an emergency in the operation of the city government as the city needs a thorough human resources manual and policy in place and needs an updated comprehensive plan and must engage the professional services necessary necessary to vote as soon as possible and is necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, safety, morals, or welfare of the city. And this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption. Duly enacted by council on first reading the eleventh day of August two thousand twenty-five.
Okay, um, is there a motion to suspend the rules? So move, second. Any discussion on suspension of the rules?
What is the, the pressing nature of this emergency? What is stopping us from reading this a second time?
So then, if, 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 that determination is solely council's, but if council does not suspend the rules, then the city manager will not be able to sign the contract until October eighth.
October eighth?
Correct, because.
Oh, thirty days after.
Yes.
Okay, understood.
So, I, I mean.
Time is obvious since it's not necessarily.
Right, so there are three options, council can suspend the rules and declare an emergency, in which case the city manager has authority tonight. Hopeful he'll wait till tomorrow at least to sign it, but, um, can do it tonight. Could say, well, we'll just have a second reading, but then have an emergency, so it goes into effect then after the second reading, in which case it would be September eighth, or thirty days after, those are the three options. Uh, any further discussion on suspension of the rule? Okay, please call the rule.
Mr. Lawson?
Yeah.
Ms. Flower?
No.
Mr. Pack?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Yeah?
Yes.
Joseph Sol?
Yes.
Is there a motion to adopt? Motion to adopt? Second, is there a discussion on adoption? Please call the rule.
Ms. Flower?
No.
Ms. Pack?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Joseph Sol?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Ordinance forty-nine twenty-five passes. Okay, ordinance fifty twenty-five?
The line, introduce it.
Go introduce.
An ordinance amending the two thousand twenty-five appropriations ordinance. Whereas the two thousand twenty-five appropriations needed to be amended. Whereas appropriations of ten thousand dollars to General Fund one zero zero dash sixty-five dash four one one three four vacant property maintenance is necessary. Whereas appropriations of thirty thousand dollars, Fund number four twenty-five, line item four two five dash one zero zero dash eight zero one one one, Fund four four twenty-five K nine unit fund or K nine unit for the Nelsonville Police Department. Whereas appropriations of seven thousand five hundred dollars to the General Fund, number one zero zero dash three seven zero dash two one one zero zero, contract services for audit costs is necessary. Whereas appropriations of twenty thousand dollars to the General Fund, one zero zero dash six two four dash three zero zero one seven, City Hall utilities or utility costs at City Hall is necessary. Now therefore, be ordered by the Council of the City of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio, as follows. Two thousand twenty-five appropriations ordinance is amended to appropriate in the inappropriate balance to the following fund. Appropriations in the sum of ten thousand dollars from the inappropriate balance of the General Fund, the line item one zero zero dash sixty-five dash four one one three four vacant property maintenance. Appropriations in the sum of thirty thousand dollars from the inappropriate. Appropriations in the sum of thirty thousand dollars from the unappropriated balance of fund four twenty-five K nine fund, to line item four two five dash one zero zero dash eight zero one 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 for a K nine unit for the Nelsonville Police Department. Appropriations in the sum of seven thousand five hundred dollars from the unappropriated balance of the general fund, to line item one zero zero dash three seven zero dash two one one zero zero, contract services for audit costs. And appropriations in the sum of twenty thousand dollars from the unappropriated balance of the general fund, to line item one zero zero dash sixty-four dash three zero zero one seven, city hall utilities, or utility costs at city hall. The total unappropriated balance is decreased by said amount. The total appropriations in each respective fund mentioned above are increased by said amount. The city auditor is hereby authorized to submit changes to the city's certificate of resources pursuant to this ordinance to the Athens County Budget Commission. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect immediately upon its adoption pursuant to section four point three, I'm sorry, four point one one in Nelsonville City Charter as this ordinance provides appropriations for buildings against, will be enacted by council on second reading the eighth day of September two thousand twenty-five.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, ordinance fifty-one twenty-five, please. I'll introduce it.
Thank you. An ordinance establishing a storm sewer fee for all water and sewer customers and creating a storm sewer line item. Whereas council finds it is necessary and in the best interest of the city to establish a three dollar storm sewer monthly fee to be assessed to all water customer accounts. Whereas the purpose of the storm sewer monthly fee is to provide fund for upgrades and necessary maintenance to the city's storm sewer infrastructure and systems. Whereas it is necessary for the city auditor to, to create a new line item for, for the storm sewer fund. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio, as follows. Council hereby establishes a three dollar storm sewer monthly fee. This storm sewer monthly fee shall be assessed to all water customers. The funds generated from the storm sewer monthly fee shall be collected in a new storm sewer fund line item. The city auditor is hereby directed to create and establish such new storm sewer fund line item. The funds deposited in the storm sewer fund line item shall be used exclusively for upgrades and necessary maintenance to the city's storm sewer infrastructure and systems, and for no other purpose. Council hereby finds and determines that all formal actions taken relative to the adoption of this ordinance were taken in an open meeting of Nelsonville City Council, and that all deliberations of council and of its committees, if any, which resulted in formal action, were taken in meetings open to the public in full compliance with applicable legal requirements. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect after the earliest time permitted by law, will be enacted by council on second reading the eighth day of September two thousand twenty-five.
All right, thank you very much. Ordinance fifty-two twenty-five? I'll introduce it.
Thank you.
Uh, a quick question on this one before we read it. Um, says council finds it necessary the city to take over Kimberly Road, that should say Leax Water?
Right.
Okay.
Yes.
So we'll just need, um, uh, an amendment, motion to amend, to change. Hasn't been read yet, yeah, that's why, that's why I saw that, I'm sorry, I was trying to save, uh, from the.
So it's Leax, just Leax Water?
Yeah, I mean.
Okay.
Uh, well, their letterhead says Leax Water District.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. Leax Water, so we just change that there, and then the second whereas maybe? I think that's the one.
Well, and then, so it'd be the title.
Yes, you're right.
Well, first whereas, second whereas, and then paragraph one.
All right, hopefully we didn't just abuse you on that one.
No, that's to be clear.
Okay. We tried.
Okay, are you ready?
All set.
Yeah.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement for Leax Water District to take over the Kimberly Road water line. Whereas council finds it is necessary for Leax, the Leax Water District to take over the Kimberly Road water line to ensure proper care and maintenance of the Kimberly Road water line. Whereas council desires to authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement for the Leax Water District to take over the Kimberly Road water line. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio, as follows. City manager is hereby authorized to enter into agreement for the Leax Water District to take over the Kimberly Road water line. Council hereby finds and determines that all formal actions taken relative to the adoption of this ordinance were taken in an open meeting of Nelsonville City Council, and that all deliberations of council and of its committees, if any, which resulted in formal action, were taken in meetings open to the public in full compliance with applicable legal requirements. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect at the earliest time permitted by law, will be enacted by council on second reading the eighth day of September two thousand twenty-five.
Thank you very much. Um, next, resolution twenty-three fifty-one? I'll introduce it.
We'll have to deal with that. A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into proposed nationwide opioid settlement. Whereas abuse of opioids due to misconduct related to opioids has caused great harm to the city of Nelsonville and its citizens. Whereas a proposed nationwide settlement agreement has been reached in litigation between government entities and Alphagen, Amneal, Apotex, Hinkah, and Vivior, Mylan, Sun, and Zytus concerning liability of these opioid manufacturers. Whereas the proposed nationwide settlement contemplates the aid opioid manufacturers will provide a maximum of approximately seven hundred twenty million dollars in cash to participating states and subdivisions to remediate and abate the impact of the opioid crisis. Whereas eligible subdivisions within each participating state decide whether to participate in the settlement, and an eligible subdivision will receive benefits under the settlement only if it elects to participate in the settlement. Whereas the city has been informed of its right to elect to participate in the settlement. Whereas council finds it is in the best interest of the city to authorize the city manager to determine if it is in the best interest of the city to participate in the settlement, and if so, the city should elect to participate. Now therefore be resolved by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio, as follows. The council hereby authorize city manager to determine if it is in the best interest of the city to elect to participate in the proposed nationwide settlement agreement between the government entities and Alphagen, Amneal, Apotex, Hinkah, and Vivior, Mylan, Sun, and Zytus concerning the liability of these aid opioid manufacturers. City manager at his full discretion shall make such determination and shall have authority to enter into the proposed nationwide settlement agreement. The deadline for participating is October eighth, two thousand twenty-five. City council hereby finds that this resolution was adopted in a meeting open to the public as required by applicable law. This is in writing, will be in full force and effect at the earliest time permitted by law, duly adopted by council on first reading the eleventh day of August, two thousand twenty-five.
One, one point, so this is in addition to the other resolution that had been passed by council involving unrelated opioid litigation, that one dealt with the Sacra family and their, their alleged liability with respect to the opioid, uh, crisis. This is litigation directly involving these aid opioid manufacturers. So it's two totally different pots of money, although I would, seven hundred twenty is a, a lot of money, honestly, it's probably not old enough to mitigate the opioid crisis caused by these various, um, bad actors. The amount, though, that would come to the city of Nelsonville is just going to be a very tiny fraction of actors being split up between a whole host of other.
The whole countryside.
Correct. So just.
Buckle your hand.
Um, I don't, I don't, in my view, I don't think that that does people, good people of Nelsonville justice for what they had to deal with, with the harm caused by these, again, bad actors, but the only alternative would be if you don't do it, either forego the money or then engage the city's own expensive, um, outside counsel too.
Wouldn't you also be kind of saying that we don't have an opioid problem? If you, if, if we were to not engage in this?
Um, actually, no.
I would argue with anybody that says we don't.
No, 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 I mean, legally, if something would come up.
I, I think legally, if, if, if you don't do it, the city's going to have to spend an enormous amount of money to try to, it would have to prove from the ground up, um, that Nelsonville specifically is suffering from an opioid crisis unique to Nelsonville, but it's not true of anywhere else. Um, that might be the case, but I don't know of any evidence that would suggest that, like, like, I don't mean anything disrespectful, but the opioid crisis that's affecting Nelsonville is the same opioid crisis likely affecting Portsmouth, it's, it's one of the same, which is why this settlement.
And for the, this would be the best bank for our buck more than likely, because we're not really, we're not putting city funds at play here.
Correct.
But we could get something from it, but if we spend our own money to file a litigation.
And chasing money, I'm not.
Yeah, taking it.
But I think, I think my point, my, my question was, if we don't pass this, would it be saying that we don't have a problem? In other words, would it be saying, in future lawsuits, would it be saying, we turn down this one?
Yeah, so it, it's a good question, so it would, tech, yes, the answer to your question's yes, but in a complicated way, where it basically would be, you turn this down, then the city is on the hook for the statute of limitations with respect to the city. If that's blown, if that statute's blown, then the city is saying, no, it doesn't affect.
Yeah.
I'm going to, I have not looked into it, but I'm going to guess that statute of limitations is passed for most of what that seven hundred twenty million covered.
Most of the stuff that started the opioid pandemic isn't even available anymore. There are specific pills that were made by specific manufacturers and were sold. There's someplace in West Virginia, there are towns of a thousand that received a million OxyContin pills to distribute to a town of a thousand. But they were, they're, these manufacturers made individual products, and that's why they're named. I, I'm not being funny, I've read into this, it's one, it's one of the things I'm interested in.
Okay, is there, um, is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion on the adoption? Or call the rule.
Mr. Flowers?
Me, yeah.
Where, Mr. Flowers, right?
I, I don't know, depends on what hour it is. I fell asleep about an hour ago.
Mr. Pack?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Joseph Sol?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, um, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda, to add resolution uh, twenty-three fifty-two, and, uh, Ms. Army, I'm going to give you a break here, let Mr. Roe read this one.
Uh, twenty-three twenty-five, or?
This is an ordinance. This is an ordinance.
Order sixty-three twenty-five.
No, that one wasn't on, no. That's not on the agenda either.
No.
Okay. I, we were on resolutions, that's my bad, I should have amended the agenda earlier.
It's okay, it'll work.
Um, then, uh.
Well, yeah, well, here, um, I guess I'm sorry.
I actually made a motion to amend the agenda for the different resolution. Can I change my, uh, motion to add the ordinance fifty-three twenty-five also? Uh, the, the resolution.
I've got this, I've got the ordinance, I don't think that.
Oh, yeah, so I just deal it kind of off the order.
Oh, okay, okay.
So fifty-three twenty-five, Court.
Yes. Okay, so I'm sorry, I made a resolution, uh, amendment, or a, a motion to add the resolution, um.
Any ordinance? Any ordinance?
Yes, can I change my motion to add also to include the ordinance? Okay, so to my motion to amend the agenda, I'd also like to add ordinance fifty-three twenty-five to that. Um, do we have a second?
Second.
Um.
Well, we have the ordinance, we have the ordinance here.
For fifty-three twenty-five, there's also a resolution that was just, that I guess that is.
Either is on the agenda.
Yeah.
We have them, but they're not on the agenda.
All right, yeah.
We're amending.
Okay, thanks, thanks, thanks.
Okay, um, I'm sorry, we got motion in a second. Yes, um, clerk, I'm sorry. Can we, she needs, uh, triple pay for this meeting, it's like, it's been three times the meeting length, by the way. Yes.
Yeah?
Yes.
Joseph Sol?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Okay, so, um.
No, just, oh, why, yeah, never mind.
Yeah, you can miss one, okay. Um, so clerk, could, could we read ordinance fifty-three twenty-five?
I'd love to.
I'm reading.
What's so lucky?
I will introduce it. Think I was causing all this havoc right now.
An ordinance authorizing and directing the city to make a retainer payment to the city attorney for case number two five C I zero one three six and declaring emergency. Whereas council finds it has agreed to indemnify the city attorney for official acts made by the city attorney pursuant to lawful instructions given to the city attorney by the city. Whereas the current city attorney con- whereas the current city attorney contract also provides, quote, "The city agrees that Jonathan E. Rowe shall be covered by the city's municipal liability insurance policy to the extent necessary as determined by the city attorney and as required or permitted by law," unquote. Whereas the current city attorney contract also provides, quote, "The city agrees to reimburse Jonathan E. Rowe for any personal, reasonable personal expenses," I'm sorry, reasonable expenses incurred as a result of his work as city attorney, unquote. Whereas the city attorney has informed the city of certain expenses incurred as a result of his work as city attorney, and council finds it is necessary and appropriate appropriate to approve reimbursement of such expenses. Whereas the city finds it is necessary and appropriate in the best interest of the city for the city to make a retained payment for the amount of twenty thousand dollars for the city attorney's engagement of legal counsel for the city attorney in direct connection with the city attorney's official acts and acts taken in accordance with his lawful instructions from the city, provided that any unused amount of the retainer shall be remitted back to the city upon the conclusion of the representation as set forth herein. Whereas council finds it is necessary and appropriate to instruct the special counsel appointed by ordinance forty-four twenty-five to seek full back payment.
You want me to pick it up?
No, 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 I'm finishing. Uh, okay, whereas council finds it is necessary and appropriate to instruct the special counsel appointed by ordinance forty-four twenty-five to seek full payment back to the city of the retained amount from those parties taking legal action against the city in case number two five C I zero one three six. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio, as follows. City council hereby approves and authorizes the payment of a twenty thousand dollar retainer to L. Scott Petroff Esquire as an advance for the payment of services rendered by the city attorney in case number two five C I zero one three six, as those services relate to the city attorney's official act and or acts taken by the city attorney in connection with his services rendered to the city as city attorney. Any unused portion, if any, of the retainer shall be returned to the city. The city auditor is hereby directed and instructed to immediately pay a twenty thousand dollar retainer to L. Scott Petroff Esquire as an advance for payment for services rendered to the city attorney in case number two five C I zero one three six. If such retainer is used, the city shall promptly pay any and all invoices submitted by L. Scott Petroff Esquire for services rendered to the city attorney. Special counsel duly appointed by forty-four twenty-five is hereby directed and instructed to take all steps reasonably and lawfully necessary to seek full payments back to the city of all money described in section two herein from those parties taking legal action against the city in case number two five C I zero one three six. City council hereby finds and determines that all formal actions taken relative to the adoption of this ordinance- City council hereby finds and determines that all formal actions taken relative to the adoption of this ordinance were taken in an open meeting. Of the Nelsonville City Council and in all deliberations of council. And of its committees, if any, which resolving the formal action were taken in meetings open to the public in full compliance with applicable legal requirements. By members of council voting to dispense with two the two readings of the ordinance, the rules are hereby suspended for this ordinance. And this ordinance is hereby enacted on first reading pursuant to ORC seven thirty-one point one-five. And Nelsonville City Charter sections four point zero-nine through four point one-one. This ordinance is hereby passed as an emergency measure pursuant to ORC seven thirty-one point thirty and article four, section four point zero-nine. Through four point one-one of the Nelsonville City Charter as an emergency in the operation. Of the city government as the city needs to provide the retainer for the city attorney's legal counsel engaged for case number two-five CI zero-one-three-six immediately. As the city has certain contractual obligations for the city attorney and it's necessary for the immediate preservation. Of the public peace, health, safety, morals, or welfare of the city. And this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption. Willing action by council on first reading on the eleventh day of August two thousand twenty-five.
Okay, uh, motion to suspend the rules.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion on suspension of the rules? Okay, clerk, please call a roll.
For Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Joseph Sol?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Flowers? Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Okay, motion to adopt. Second. May I? Discussion on adoption. Let's see one. So this has been, I submitted this to the special counsel for review. Um, prior, that was why it wasn't originally in the packet because I had to complete the review from the special counsel. But um, they are the ones who reviewed this. Okay, thank you. Any discussion uh, about adoption?
Does this matter? Um, I mean, how much, how much does it matter though that rather than saying? Those parties taking legal action against the city in case number twenty-five CI zero-one-three-six, it just says. Those parties taking legal action against the city.
It it should say, it should say, and.
Okay, it's just such a small thing, but it happens twice. Um, the last whereas clause and uh, section three.
So I think you should treat it automatically as a motion to amend.
Yeah.
So it moves, yes, sir.
Orness.
A second.
In this way.
Okay, um, is there uh? We we have a first and a second, then, yeah, okay. Just for roll.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Joseph Sol?
Yes.
No.
Mr. Lawson?
No.
Mr. Flowers?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Uh, is there any further discussion on adoption? Or you have a motion on second for adoption, discussion?
This, this, this lawsuit. Um. It's another retainer, that's correct.
That's correct.
It's not the forty thousand dollar retainer, it's a twenty thousand dollar retainer for the case against.
So so the re- the re- the reason, the reason I had this reviewed by the special counsel is counsel, the city's contractually obligated to pay this amount, you don't have a choice. Um.
My question is for what? I know it's a lawsuit.
So you're contract, the city is contractually obligated to provide this retainer on behalf of the city attorney.
No, I understand it, Mr. Rowe.
Mr. Rowe is being sued by your friend Greg Smith and this is the higher, the attorney to represent.
You should, I I don't concur with.
That's, that's what you're asking, it's a, it's a lawsuit.
I don't agree with the lawsuit.
It's the lawsuit that Greg Smith filed against our attorney. And we're going to keep up to our end of the contract that says we will defend him as our city attorney against your friend Greg Smith's lawsuit. Because he got caught at your house when he was served with legal papers.
I'm not sure that's relevant for the time.
I can say whatever I want, I have the freedom of speech, especially at this table.
One piece of joint that's.
Excuse me, we're, we're having council discussion.
Um, so if you recall, the city filed a lawsuit against Mr. Smith for continuing to seek the um.
Right.
Payment from the city.
Right.
Uh. And held counter claims against several members of council and Mr. Rowe, this is.
Except you, oh, okay, yeah, except you, probably because he's your friend.
Because he's my friend.
And also, Mr. Flowers didn't participate in the decision to um.
That's correct. Oh.
Um.
I'm right. And it being in John Potter's house when he got certain papers and then I had to do it.
Okay, is there any more discussion pertaining to this ordinance and the adoption of it? Okay, clerk, please call a roll.
Mr. Joseph Sol?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Flowers?
No.
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes. Okay, all right, so uh, ordinance fifty-three twenty-five passes uh, resolution twenty-three fifty-two. I'll introduce it.
A resolution reaffirming the city's lawful property interest in various, in its various privileges. Whereas attorney-client privilege is a cornerstone of our freedoms as Americans and such privilege is a lawful property of course. In the city of Nelsonville for the city's communication with its legal counsel. Whereas the city also possesses certain additional privileges, including the executive, executive session privilege. For executive sessions of public bodies of the city, including city council. Whereas council finds it is necessary and appropriate to reaffirm the city's lawful property interest in its various privileges. Including its executive session privilege. Whereas the executive session privilege exists to ensure orderly operation of government function and business. Whereas council and only council may lawfully waive the city's executive session privilege. Whereas council finds, therefore, it shall be unlawful for any individual member of council or set of members. To unilaterally disclose the city's executive session privileges without council waiving such privilege. Whereas council finds unauthorized disclosure of city's executive session material is a defamation and theft of the city's property. Now therefore be resolved by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Adams County, Ohio as follows. City council reaffirms the city's lawful property interest in its lawfully held privileges, including executive set session privilege. Which attaches. To an executive session held by any public body of the city. Council and only council has authority to waive the city's lawful executive privilege in any executive session. No individual member of council therefore has lawfully, has lawful authority to unilaterally disclose to any third party an executive session material of the city. The violation, section two, by a member of council may result. In any of the following consequences, one, such member being stripped of any committee assignments, two, such member being excluded from any subsequent. Executive session of the council, and three, such member being subject to a censure by. And at least two-thirds vote of the council, and four, referral to the appropriate law enforcement agency of a theft of off, of in-office offense. This resolution shall be in full force and effect at the earliest time permitted by law, delivered off by council on first reading and later than August two thousand twenty-five.
I will move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion on adoption?
So this just means that if anybody were to share information out of executive session, then they would be held legally liable for it coming here on outright?
Correct.
All right.
Any further discussion? Okay, clerk, call a roll.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Flowers?
No.
Juan? Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Yes.
Joseph Sol?
Yes.
Okay, uh, resolution twenty-three fifty-two passes. Um, just report. Don't chastise me.
Uh, we've been going through uh, the various chapters and ordinances and everything. And when you look at them all together, they're very confusing. So if you break them down one piece at a time, they're really not that bad. So this council meeting, I'd like to talk to you about chapter one fifty-five, rental property. Um, it's got seventeen sections in it. Uh, I've made several copies, if anybody's interested in it. Uh, but I'm going to schedule an educational session this Friday here in city council chambers to apply. So if anybody is interested, if they have any questions about rental property, uh, please come by. I don't believe it has to be advertised, it's not, we're not making any decisions, we're just having, it's just an educational.
Like a town hall meeting?
Yeah, um. It's really easy to understand, anyone who has rental property has to register with the city. Uh, I would also invite real estate agents to come by because if you're selling real estate with the purpose that they're going to rent it. Uh, you might want to keep a copy of it so that your potential buyers are not taken by surprise. So I just think that if you, then, you know, the next city council meeting will address another issue, another section. Um, parade of hills is starting this Wednesday, and if you've never attended the parade of hills, you don't know what you're missing. So I would encourage you to get out. This week, as in normal weeks, I messed up. You know, we've had a very dry season, or no, we've had a very rainy season, I'm sorry, we've had more than our share of rain. However, the past week, we've been hit with very dry conditions. So the other day, I turned on my soaker hose for my garden, intended to have it on about thirty minutes. The following morning, I discovered I left it on all night, which means I'm going to end up with a high bill. When the insurance letter came to me at the beginning of the year from the water department, I just kind of laughed at it, said, oh, I don't think those are mistakes. Well, apparently I do. So I came in, I signed up for the insurance, and guess what? They'll prorate it for the rest of the year. So if you've not invested in the insurance program, I would encourage you to do so. Because you will have a leaky toilet, you will have a broken water main line, you will forget to leave your soaker hose on until the following morning. So, uh, it's a service that we provide, I think it's a very good service, and uh, if you're interested in it, please take advantage of it. Our seasonal workers are coming to an end, they're going back to school. It's been a very good program. Um, we've learned some things, um, lessons learned on how many people we need, how many people we don't need. So we'll reeval, reevaluate it next year. Um, Vic, do you want to say anything about that, or?
They did a wonderful job for us, and the only thing they did was we eat, but. They stayed very busy, signs, streets where we couldn't get through. Um, the parks, city halls, the levee, they were on top of it, great group of kids. Actually, I did a cookout for them Friday since it was our last Friday here. Um. The, we're down, down to four, two of them are already graduated, two of them are going to school. Um, the two that are going back to school Thursday, I I gave them the option to stay until Wednesday if they wanted to, and they both wanted to. And the two that are graduated are staying till June on September. That was, it was a real good program, I mean, they've been very helpful. All the trash cans in town were removed, brought back in here, sanded down, painted. I mean, they've done a good job for us.
Just kept them busy then.
Yes, they're very busy.
And I personally would like to thank the council because you took your chance. Uh, you didn't know how the program was going to start to turn out, and to be honest with you, I didn't either, but it turned out well.
Yep, thanks for bringing it to, um, Ms. Larue, did you have a question for the city manager?
Oh, no, I just thought that was wonderful, what the kids were doing.
Any other questions for uh, Mr. Holmes?
I have a question. Um, you can go ahead. Uh, Mr. Holmes, did you say that uh, meeting on rental like code, um, was it two P M. on Friday?
I'm sorry, what?
What was the first?
Oh, uh, the educational meeting is two P M. on Friday.
Is it open to the public too?
Yeah, yes, that's exactly who I want, yeah.
Is there a reason you chose two P M. on a weekday when a lot of working people not be able to attend that meeting?
Well, because I don't work on Saturday, I guess. I I can have it anytime.
Okay.
Okay, uh, would you think a better time would be on the weekend?
I actually would be interested in going for sure, but uh, two P M. on a Friday would probably be a little bit more difficult for them. Um, maybe after five on a weekday or on a Saturday.
Um. I tell you what, why don't we change it to uh, six o'clock Friday? Okay. Okay.
Okay, so Friday, six P M.
Here in city.
Here at council chambers, and this is going to be on chapter one fifty-five.
One fifty-five rental, rental property.
Rental property, okay.
We're going to have Dan put that out on Facebook.
Yeah, we can have Mr. Viper, um.
Yeah.
Put that out, I'm sure.
That was my question.
Doesn't have to be, doesn't have to be, it's not a public meeting.
Yeah, I I think just more for the marketing of it, just the awareness of it.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes.
Thank you, sir. All right, Mr. Holmes, we've got another question for you here.
Okay.
Excellent.
Um, with this being the auditor's last. Council meeting.
Mm-hmm.
And um, his last month in office, have you received any applications?
For auditor?
For filling the vacancy?
Yeah.
In September, okay. Um. Do you, is that something that you were planning to bring to council at the September eighth meeting?
Whoa. So, i- if I may, the fulfilling the vacancy in the auditorship, it's an appointment by the city manager that's then confirmed by the council, so. The city manager could make an appointment on September first and then submit it to council for the confirmation vote on September eighth. Um, but I I have not thought, I don't mean to quit, the city manager. And that wouldn't prevent the, his appointment from beginning their. At the first, correct. Okay, because it's, it's a, it's a confirmation of an.
There'll be, there'll be a lapse of time where though.
No.
He names himself September the first, right?
Right, but if he makes the appointment on September first, the appointment is an appointment, it's just subject to the confirmation. By the council, and the council will then confirm on the eighth.
Can we take a short uh, reset, like two minutes?
Now?
Right now.
Go. Well, there may, there may be a motion. Okay, um, for, for Mr. Holmes, um, uh, request, um, is there a motion for a brief recess?
So moved.
Okay. Okay. Any discussion on the recess? Okay, all right, clerk, call a roll, please.
Mr. Flowers?
Sure.
Mr. Jackson?
Yep.
Mr. Henderson?
Yep.
Mr. Taylor?
Yep.
Joseph Sol?
Yes.
Yes.
I'll be right back.
Okay, sir.
You have somebody you gotta have a great discussion with.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
You have somebody you're going to have a great discussion with.
Correct.
Yes.
Okay. So we can have my votes. I think that's true.
Yes.
So we can have my votes. I think that's true.
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion on coming back into?
Well, it's too late.
Okay. Clear call roll, please.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Joseph Saul?
Yes.
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes. Okay. Mr. Holmes, for yours?
Yeah. I apologize for that, you caught me a little off guard. Yes, I did advertise, and I got a letter of interest, and I would like to recommend to the city council that we appoint Dakota Saul as auditor to fulfill, probably all go all the way to January.
And that would be effective September 1st, then?
No, that would be effective as soon as he can start, because I would like him to get, I would like him to work with a current auditor.
Okay.
You know, I know it's not much, but two weeks would be great.
Okay. Mr. Rowe, is that, we just adopted a staffing ordinance. I mean, if we need to have the clerk read it again, I'm sure she's glad.
I'm just kidding, I won't spot you.
She's got to memorize.
But I'm asking because it would overlap that position for.
Right, so it wouldn't, it wouldn't be at, at least from now until September 1st, it wouldn't be as auditor, but it would be some sort of special assistant to the auditor.
Okay.
And then.
So the actual position of auditor that Mr. Saul would then assume would not take place until September 1st?
Correct, because it's not, the office isn't vacant, but given Mr. Holmes' concern about, hey, get it. His concern is we don't want to put the new auditor in the same boat that Mr. Saffickin was when he was, there was basically, no transition.
Sure. Okay. Is there any objections to?
Not participating.
Sure, 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 yeah. Mr. Flowers, Mr. Lawson, any objection? Mr. Peck, was there a mention?
Maybe it's just a motion.
Do we, do we have qualifications for said gentleman? Yes, sir. Oh, sorry. Are you aware of that? I'm sorry.
You had no qualifications. Well, I, I want to pay the qualifications I was looking for. I was looking for someone who's gone by integrity, and I did do some background checking and, you know, they. There's really a few couple things I'm looking for. Someone who's gone, someone who is integrity, but more anything else, someone that's teachable. Okay? I don't want someone going and saying, oh, I already know, no. I want someone who's willing to learn.
We'll also be happy to give my background if you.
That, 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 don't take this wrong, please don't take this wrong, but what I'm saying is, that's a lot of money going through. And I'm not, I'm not worried about the honesty of it, and I'm not worried about the integrity of it. I'm worried about, do you know accounting? Do you know figures? Do you know? That's the only thing I'm asking. And I ask the same thing for.
Do you want to come speak to that?
I'll stay here, I feel like I can object enough.
Can I interrupt really quick? I'm so sorry. Just as a financial and sometimes ethical advisor to the council, my advice was just, would I take it till after?
Absolutely. Yeah. I don't mind at all.
You don't have to follow any instructions for it, it's just my advice. What's been asked is appropriate.
Okay, sorry, I'm sorry.
He asked for Ms. Joseph Saul to.
Use the advice.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
My fault. I didn't mean to.
To answer your question, I do have over a decade of experience working in commercial and restaurant hospitality-esque settings where I have balanced budgets, I have tracked, I have pretty good experience with accounts from the end, balancing accounts, making sure everything tracks back, tracks back to where it's supposed to go or have come from. It would be a learning experience in some regards where I have never stood in this position before. But after speaking with Taylor and doing some research into the role, I do feel well qualified and capable to meet the needs of filling the role itself.
Would we have to have, would he have to be bonded?
Oh, absolutely. Any, any person that would say.
Would, would he have to be bonded before he takes the seat over there?
The first, the required.
First duty.
So he'd have to be bonded the first day that he takes it all himself.
Right.
To begin with, Mr. Taylor.
As long as he's under the.
Right.
Part of the hiring practice, part of the hiring practice is for him to get bonded. That's the same way with McCray. You, you, you've already got your bond.
That's all done, yeah. So they emailed to Taylor, who stepped out, but each other paperwork from McFadden Insurance, that's, that was all finished Friday.
It's the same way when I was hired.
Well, no, I understand the bonding, I understand the bonding. I just meant at such short notice, and he, but if he's under his toolage, then he can get his pay worth.
If I may add one point on the bonding. So if someone is elected or appointed to an office that's required by law to be bonded, then that, and that person then is denied bond by the bonding company cannot get bonded. That operates as an automatic vacature as an operation of law of that office. So nothing else happens, it's just that office is vacant.
Yeah, that actually happened once before in the city, too. We had an auditor take over and then was unable to be bonded in.
Right, which to Mr. Holmes' suggestion to have the special, Mr. Saul initially appointed a special assistant to the auditor makes some sense, because to your point, Mr. Flowers, having him under his toolage does give him.
Right.
Time to do that.
So, so we, did we get anything on what we're paying this gentleman? Taylor? Yes, I'm sorry, I missed the question.
What would we be paying him as the official?
So, that's a complicated question. The best way to simplify it, I think, because you can't have two elected positions for the same position.
Right.
So it's, no offense to anybody, no matter who it was, they can't be the same job. Mr. Rowe, correct me if I'm wrong, I almost think the safest practice would be something hourly, so that they could just track the actual training hours.
Yep.
And I don't have a figure in mind, I.
Why, if you could do it out of the kindness of his heart, just get the train.
My, my interest in doing this is not financial, it's for the good of the city, and I would be willing to leave a proponent on the training period if it came to financial issues.
I, I don't know.
I don't think that's necessary.
No.
I'm joking.
I know you worry.
I know, it's, it's not about personal gain.
I understand. Yeah. Mr. Holmes, if I may, if the city is going to require a million dollar bond on the city auditor, which it does, and I do think that given elsewhere that's appropriate, the council needs to pay whoever that is commensurate with that requirement. If you're going to, if you're going to put that enormous burden on someone, you need to pay them commensurate with that.
But we're paying for the bond, correct?
Correct, but if there's a forfeiture of the bond, then the person who's bonded pays the bondman back.
Oh, I got you.
So if they're not getting paid, they don't have fun, I mean, not that that's ever going to happen, it's just that's, that's the reality of what the bonds process is.
I, I think that it's going to be two weeks. I don't, it's not, it's not a large, it's not a large financial disparity. My opinion would be just to pay, you know, whatever the auditor position would be. I don't think it's.
As an hourly basis?
All payable on an hourly basis, because if he only comes in and trains thirty hours for the week, you pay him thirty hours for the week then, so.
May I suggest twenty hours, twenty dollars an hour?
I don't think that's enough.
Well, decent amount of money.
It'll go up when it becomes bonded.
Sure.
But, but shit for the training period.
I was going to the Sunday cookout anyway.
I mean, that's, I mean, that's. No, no, I, that's fine, that's fine.
I'm.
I mean, it's, it's, it's fine. I don't, at least he's getting compensated, he's going to be spending his time. And, and I had a question, too, that Mr. Saul's the most qualified candidate that applied for the position, too. I just wanted to, I thought that was the case, that's why you're recommending it, and that's why, so I just wanted to have that on the record, so thank you. So I'm, I'm fine if, if Mr., I'll take Mr. Holmes' recommendation to appoint Mr. Saul as the special assistant to the auditor at twenty dollars an hour until September 1st, in which case he would then take the appointment of the city auditor, providing he is bonded. I have a second. Any discussion on that motion?
I got one more quick question. I know we're running real late here, but Mr. Saffickin has, can, I mean, he, he's been around a while, he's gotten some raises, is that correct? He's got, this gentleman, the same amount of money that he's been raised?
He, when he takes over the actual position of the city auditor, he will receive the same amount of pay that Mr. Saffickin is currently earning.
Correct.
Yeah. That's, that's how the, that's how the staffing ordinance, that's how it's, the ordinance is currently, so. So yes, that's how that will go.
And I'm not sure, so I researched it, I'm not sure if council could reduce it, because Mr. Saff, this is Mr. Saffickin's same term.
Right.
Come January 1st, because of there's the switching government, there can be an adjustment to the city auditor's salary, but I don't think, assuming now on that.
A switch on the elected position would only take effect in the next.
Correct.
Next term.
Correct, yeah.
Okay. We have a motion, we have a second. No more discussion? Clear call roll, please.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Flowers?
Yes.
Does this mean this is automatically an abstention? She's abstained, abstained, okay.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Flowers?
Yes. I wasn't sure, but it would should be an abstain or no vote. It's just abstaining. Okay. Could we invite her back into the room, please?
In the bathroom?
Can I ask, should the minutes reflect the absence as well?
Yeah, they should. Ms. Harmon, can you just make sure? I mean, that she departed for the destruction and was not present. I guess she didn't formally announce she was pleased with herself. That's right. Well, she did tell me when we were talking, she said, she did say that she wasn't going to participate in the discussion, so. But she might not have said that loud enough.
True, it might hurt.
Sure, yeah, okay.
You're sitting right next to her.
I didn't know you got marinated, man. I'm David Moore.
All right. Welcome back. All right, so any further city manager report? Okay. Any further questions for the city manager? Okay. Good of the order. Mr. Joseph Saul, now that you're back, you want to start us off?
I have nothing.
You have nothing, okay. Mr. Lawson?
Nothing.
Okay. Ms. Flowers?
I met, I have a great writing committee with Hockin College, and we had, we met, and we, I've got some paperwork that I'm going to give to Mr. Holmes. And it's for crosswalks on the, the new paving of Canal Street. Updated crosswalks, I'm trying to get crosswalks put on the square with the updated signs, that big long stretch across the square, the, the walks go from Stewart Opera House to Appalachian Foundation, to do with the Nolans. Put them, put them there, because that's what I'm not lining very well to begin with. So to get those things lined out would be great. So I have some paperwork that the grand writer gave me to give to you, and I'll give you that.
Okay.
Not tonight, tomorrow maybe or so.
Okay, that's fine.
That's all I got.
Sure.
Okay. Mr. Peck?
Nothing.
Mr. Henderson, nothing? Nothing for your first meeting? Nothing, okay. Well, then I'm going to be, I'm going to steal the show then, because I've got a couple items. First of all, it's Parade of Hills, so everybody enjoy, you know, have fun, be safe. I love Parade of Hills. Got my 75th anniversary shirt on, so I'm proud, you know, it's exciting. Also, I would like to make a motion to have special counsel file appeal in the Reed Wynn case per the letter from special counsel. Is there a second?
Second.
Isn't that something that can be done in a motion, or should we have legislation?
No, we should be able to have a, the motion for him to file his paperwork with the court. I'm going to make a second motion, then we have a resolution at the next meeting, but I'm going to make that here in a bit.
What motion and second?
Is there any discussion on that motion?
Sorry, I'm going to worry.
Sorry, sorry, you're okay, you're okay.
Mr. Rowe, real quickly, can, can, can an appeal be, be sought after on a not guilty verdict?
So, so I'll, I would refer counsel to the correspondence from the special prosecutor that, that I was instructed by him to convey to council. Which was read to us, and.
Right, yeah, I was in there.
So you'll, you'll, you'll have to direct that question to the special prosecutor.
Long story short, yes, this city can.
Is that because you recused yourself from this thing, or is that just because of?
It's, it's because of a host of factors, and that's one.
I don't mean to put you on the spot, I swear, no. I, I was just, I was just, just wondering, that's all.
I mean, I, I can certainly convey the question to Mr. Nikodemus, but he will go for it. That's, that's serious. He will. Okay. Clear call roll, please.
Mr. Flowers?
Yes.
Mr. Joseph Saul?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. And now I'd like to make a motion to have council prepare a resolution for the next regular session meeting.
Come January first, because of there's the switching government, there can be an adjustment to the city auditor's salary, but I don't think between now and then.
A switch on their elected position would only take effect in the next.
Correct.
Next term.
Correct, so. Okay, uh, we have a motion, we have a second. No more discussion, clerk call roll please.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes, does this mean there's no, is automatically an abstention, she's abstaining, abstaining, okay.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Flower?
Yes.
Yes, I wasn't sure, but it would should be an abstain or no vote, just, uh, just abstain, okay. Could we invite her back into the room, please?
In the bathroom?
Uh, can I ask, should the minutes reflect the absence as well?
Yeah, they should, Ms. Harmon, can you just make sure, I mean, that. She departed for the discussion and was not present. I guess she didn't formally announce she was pleased with herself.
That's right, well, she did tell me when we were talking, she said, she did say that she wasn't gonna participate in the discussion, so, but she might not have said that loud enough.
True, it might hurt.
Okay.
When you're sitting right next to her.
I didn't know you got marinated in there. I'm dating her.
All right. Welcome back, all right, so, uh, any further city manager report, okay, any further questions for the city manager? Okay, good to be order, Ms. Justice Saul, now that you're back, you wanna start us out?
I have nothing.
You have nothing, okay. Mr. Lawson?
Nothing.
Mr. Wilson? Um, I met, I have a great writing committee with Hockin College, and we had, we met, and we, I've got some paperwork that I'm going to give Mr. Holmes. And it's for, um, crosswalks on the, um, the new paving of Canal Street. Updated crosswalks, I'm trying to get crosswalks put on the square with the updated signs, that big long stretch across the square, the, the walks go from Stewart Opera House to Appalachian Foundation to do with the Nolans. Put them, put them there because that's what I'm not lining very well to begin with, so to get those things lined out would be great. So I have some paperwork that the grand father gave me to give to you, and I'll give you that.
Okay.
Not tonight, tomorrow maybe or so.
Okay, that's fine.
That's all I got.
Sure.
Mr. Peck?
Nothing.
Mr. Henderson, nothing. Nothing for your first meeting? Nothing, okay, well, then I'm gonna be, I'm gonna steal the show then, cause I've got a couple items, first of all, it's parade of the hills, so everybody enjoy, you know, have fun, be safe, um, love parade of the hills, I've got my seventy-fifth anniversary shirt on, so I'm proud, you know, it's exciting. Um, also, I would like to make a motion, uh, to have special counsel file an appeal in the writ of win case per the letter from special counsel. Uh, is there a second?
Second.
Isn't that something that can be done in a motion, or should we have legislation?
No, we should be able to have a, the motion for him to file his paperwork with the court. I'm gonna make a second motion, then we have a resolution at the next meeting, uh, but I'm gonna make that here in a bit.
We have a motion and a second.
Is there any discussion on that motion?
Sorry, I'm gonna work.
Sorry, sorry, you're okay, you're okay.
Mr. Rowe, real quickly, you, can, can, can an appeal be, um, be sought after on a not guilty verdict?
So, so I'll, I'll, I would refer counsel to the correspondence from the special prosecutor that, that I, um, was instructed by him to convey to counsel. Which was read to us, and.
Right, yeah, yeah, I was in there.
So you'll, you'll, you'll have to direct that question to the special prosecutor.
Long story short, yes, uh, this city can appeal. Is that because you recused yourself from this thing, or is that just because of?
It's, it's because of a host of factors, and that's one of them.
I, I don't mean to put you on the spot, I swear, no, I, I, I was just, I was just, um, just wondering, that's all.
I mean, I, I can certainly convey the question to, um, um, Mr. Nikodemus, but he will go for it. That's, that's serious. He will, okay, clerk call roll please.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Justice Saul?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Flower?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes. Yes. Okay, and, uh, now I'd like to make a motion to have council prepare a resolution for the next regular session, uh, meetings dating the grounds of the appeal. So moved. Or say, you can say moved. I made the motion. Second. Sorry. No, you're good. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, clerk call roll please.
Mr. Saul?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Flower?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Is there anything?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes. Okay. Uh, and lastly, for good of the order, in honor of great fulfillment of this meeting, six. So, um, now, like to make a motion to go into executive session under O R C one twenty-one, that twenty-two G for personnel and legal matters, inviting in Mr. Holmes, uh, and, uh, Mr. Rowe.
Second.
Clerk call roll please.
Mr. Um, Lawson?
Yes.
Flower?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, motion to return from executive session at ten forty-nine P M, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, um.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Justice Saul?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Flower?
Yes.
Lord, good here.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda first. To include, to include ordinance fifty-four twenty-five, do I have a second? I'll second. Mr. Rowe, could you read fifty-four twenty-five? Oh, motion. Clerk call roll please.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Justice Saul?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson? Mr. Flower?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Rowe, could you please, do I see that? I'll introduce it. So, I'm being instructed to read this and was instructed to, um, prepare this for the council, ordinance fifty-four twenty-five, an ordinance repealing issue twenty-three due to its lack of transitional plan and authority and declaring an emergency. Whereas Nelsonville City Charter adopted by the voters in November nineteen ninety-four effective January first nineteen ninety-five serves as the foundational governing document of the city of Nelsonville, establishing its home rule authority and structure of governance under the Ohio Constitution. Whereas each member of council swears an oath to support the United States Constitution, the Ohio Constitution, and Nelsonville City Charter, and therefore each member must fulfill their duties in accordance with such oath, including supporting and defending Nelsonville City Charter when there's a lack of clear superior law supplying a rule of decision. Whereas the Ohio Constitution guarantees to the people of municipality the right to choose their form of government and principle which council reaffirm in resolution twenty-three oh five. Whereas the council of the city of Nelsonville desires to reaffirm the city's commitment to respecting the right of the people of the city of Nelsonville to choose the form of government for the city of Nelsonville. Where it has long been the legal position of the city of Nelsonville that the proper procedures for lawfully abolishing Nelsonville City Charter, should the people so choose to exercise their right, are set forth in the Ohio Constitution and applicable implementing state law and not Nelsonville City Charter. Whereas Article ten of Nelsonville City Charter lays out the procedures by which the people of Nelsonville may exercise the initiative and referendum powers for quote ordinances or resolutions unquote. Whereas Nelsonville City Charter cannot be abolished by an ordinance or resolution because Nelsonville City Charter is a superior legal obligation to any Nelsonville ordinance or resolution. Whereas therefore the initiative procedures set forth in Article ten of Nelsonville City Charter do not apply to abolishing Nelsonville City Charter. Whereas therefore Nelsonville City Charter, section ten point zero three pertains to initiative referendum and recall petitions other than the abolishment of a charter. Whereas the Fourth District Court of Appeals held in state X rel. Smith et al. versus Clement et al. twenty twenty-four, Ohio five two 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 zero, Athens County, that a hybrid approach mixing procedural requirements under Ohio Constitution Article eighteen procedures with the Nelsonville City Charter Article ten procedures is unlawful, and that the only pers- and, and that only the procedures of Article ten apply to issue twenty-three. Whereas issue twenty-three, a citizen-led initiative passed by the voters on November five, twenty twenty-four, seeks to abolish the Nelsonville City Charter and transition the city to a statutory form of government under the Ohio Revised Code effective January one, twenty twenty-six. Whereas Nelsonville City Charter, section ten point zero six, expressly provides, quote, "If a majority of the qualified electors voting on the proposed initiative vote in its favor, such initiative shall be considered adopted upon certification of the results and shall be treated in all respects in the same manner as ordinances or resolutions of the same kind adopted by council," unquote. Whereas the Nelsonville City Charter, as a city's foundational governing document, cannot be abolished through a citizen initiative under its own provision rendering issue twenty-three legally invalid. Whereas the Ohio Constitution under Article eighteen sections not seven and nine grants municipalities the authority to adopt and amend charters, but does not provide clear statutory guidance for abolishing a charter, creating ambiguity that supports the position that issue twenty-three's procedure was improper. Whereas the Fourth District Court of Appeals upheld in twenty twenty-four litigation a lower court's order to place issue twenty-three on the ballot, but the question of its substance of legality remains unresolved and subject to potential legal challenge particularly due to issue twenty-three's lack of a transitional plan and authority. Whereas the city appealed the Fourth District Court of Appeals' decision to the Ohio Supreme Court, which declined to take the appeal, and therefore the city must accept the decision of the courts on the twenty twenty-four litigation. However, the decision of the courts left the city now, to Nelsonville City Council the authority and discretion under Nelsonville City Charter, section ten point zero six, to amend or repeal issue twenty-three. Whereas the passage of issue twenty-three without a clear transition plan as noted by the Nelsonville Ad Hoc Advisory Commission risks significant disruption to city governance, including the expiration of the current council terms on November thirty, twenty twenty-five, and a lack of legal authority to establish wards or other necessary governmental structures. Whereas Nelsonville City Council finds that the potential illegality of issue twenty-three combined with the absence of a transition plan and authority constitutes an emergency affecting the health, safety, and welfare of the residents of Nelsonville necessitating immediate action to preserve continuity of government and public services. Whereas the Nelsonville City Council, in exercising its authority under the Nelsonville City Charter and Ohio law, seeks to repeal issue twenty-three to prevent legal uncertainty, ensure continuity of governance, protect the rights of Nelsonville residents to maintain their home rule authority. Whereas the city remains committed to the right of the people of the city of Nelsonville to choose the form of government for the city of Nelsonville under the lawful measures available to the people under the Ohio Constitution. Whereas exercise of the right of the people of the city of Nelsonville to choose the form of government for the city of Nelsonville under the Ohio Constitution and procedures set forth there cannot be questioned by Nelsonville City Council. Now therefore, be it ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio, as follows. One, issue twenty-three passed by the voters on November five, twenty twenty-four, would report to abolish the Nelsonville City Charter and transition the city to a statutory form of government is hereby repealed and declared null and void as of the effective date of this ordinance. Two, Nelsonville City Charter remains in full force and effect, and all existing ordinances, resolutions, and governmental structures established under the Charter shall continue uninterrupted until lawfully amended or repealed in accordance with the Ohio Constitution and Nelsonville City Charter. The city council directs the city law director to take all necessary legal actions to defend this ordinance, including but not limited to filing or responding to any legal challenges related to the repeal of issue twenty-three to ensure the continuity of home rule governance in Nelsonville. Four, the city council clerk is directed to certify a copy of this ordinance and transmit it to the Athens County Board of Elections. Five, the city council authorizes the establishment of a public education campaign to inform residents of the legal and practical implications of this resolution and to facilitate community input on future governance decisions in coordination with nonpartisan community organizations, including if possible, the legal women voters of Ohio and Athens County or other appropriate organizations. Council hereby finds and determines that all formal actions taken relative to the adoption of this ordinance were taken in the open meeting of the Nelsonville City Council, and that all deliberations of council and of its committees, if any, which resulted in formal action, were taken in meetings open to the public with full compliance with applicable legal requirements. Five members of council voting to dispense with two readings of this ordinance, the rules are hereby suspended for this ordinance, and this ordinance is hereby enacted on the first reading pursuant to O R C seven thirty-one point one five and Nelsonville City Charter, sections four point zero nine through four point one one. This ordinance is hereby passed as an emergency measure pursuant to O R C seven three one point three zero and Article four, sections four point zero nine through four point one one of Nelsonville City Charter. As an emergency in the operation of the city government, as the Athens County Board of Elections deadline for certifying November twenty twenty-five ballots is August eighteen, twenty twenty-five, and is near approaching, and this ordinance needs to be conveyed to the Athens County Board of Elections prior to the August eighteen deadline, and is necessary for the immediate preservation of public peace, health, safety, morals, or welfare of the city, and this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption, duly enacted by council on first reading on the eleventh day of August, twenty twenty-five. Thank, thank you, Mr. Rowe, uh, is there a motion to suspend the rules?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion on, uh, suspension. Clerk call roll please.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Justice Saul?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Flower?
Yes.
Mr. Peck?
Yes.
Uh, motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second. Is there a discussion on adoption?
Um. Is, uh, why is, uh, a copy being certified to the Board of Elections in this case, if nothing's being placed on the ballot? Is that just part of?
Part of it because it involves the election and the changeover statutory.
Got it, got it.
Any further discussion?
Um, I, I, I do, I have one. I, I, I'm going to have to excuse myself from this vote because I, I firmly, I've, I've said it from the beginning, I want what the citizens want, now whatever this, this is for, this bond. But eight hundred sixty people voted, I don't wanna throw their votes away. Uh, and I was put here by the people, you know, so I'm, I'm gonna have to, uh, excuse myself from this vote.
So you're standing from the voter sign, correct? Any other discussion?
Aggressive action.
Okay, clerk call roll please.
Are we inviting any public comment? Are you gonna interrupt?
Um, I wouldn't, at this point, I would say, um. Is there anybody from the public who wishes to comment? Two public members, I know. No, there's the public.
They're both employees.
Um, I would like to just ask for a little bit of clarity on the, um, point about the education fund and using the legal women voters, just for, a little clarity on what that might look like. So, everybody who has voted on the last few elections doesn't feel like they're just being thrown to the wolves, uh, sounds like there is a plan to make it accessible. Just want a little bit of info on that.
Sure, sure, I think the education por- portion of it is, is that in order for this ballot measure to go forward, if this is, if that is what the community wants, if, we need to do it the proper way, right, so the education is, is, we've been trying to educate along the way, unfortunately, um, the party that had been kind of driving that boat is, just did not wanna participate with us, they don't like us, they didn't care, but we didn't, it wasn't done properly by the state of Ohio Constitution, so we're just trying to, we need to do it the right way legally, is, so we're just trying to, we've been trying to be partners with them the whole time, so yeah, so now, now, it's, it's, we're gonna have greater input on it, we're gonna, if we're gonna do it, we're gonna do it right, we're gonna do it the right way, we're gonna do it one time. There's gonna be input from the community, there's gonna be a transition plan, so, so, yeah, so it would be, you know, um, a campaign that inform, cause I think a lot of people have been misinformed, the last election, you could see the, the, the margin era.
Well, significantly.
Yeah, significantly.
By itself included, it's, it's, as I've engaged with this, it's a learning process, I do like the idea of helping the public learn along with us.
Yeah, and I think more people have been getting engaged, you know, um, after that last election, so I think that's true, so. Um, okay. Clerk call roll please.
Mr. Um, Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Justice Saul?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Flower?
I have changed my vote to no.
Mr. Peck?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance fifty-four twenty-five passes.
May, may I say one?
Sure. Um, of course, I don't have a vote on this, I'm attorney, um, I, I do think council appreciates the, the difficulty, um, the difficult position the city attorney is in, um, but I would appreciate clarity, so as the council recalls back in December, the council explicitly imposed on me the duty to advise the city as to implementing issue twenty-three, obviously with the repeal of issue twenty-three, I, I don't think that that is possible to do, so it was does the council consider that duty fulfilled, I have no more obligations for that duty?
Yes.
I would say, yeah.
I agree as well.
But thank you for all that work, I mean, I know there was an awful lot of work anyway, definitely, I appreciate it.
The same question probably stands for the work of the advisory commission.
Absolutely, absolutely, actually, we should provide a resolution, um, honoring and thanking all the members of the, um, ad hoc commission for all the work that they have, um, completed. Is that something we can prepare for the next, I can, I can prepare it up for the next meeting, is that okay with council? The, the?
Yes.
Okay. Does that need to be a formal motion, or is that a good enough directive? I, okay, I can put it together, okay. All right, terrific. Um, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Clerk call roll please.
Mr. Justice Saul?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Flower?
Yes.
Mr. Peck?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.